Good evening, everybody. Welcome to to the February third Newburgh City Council meeting. I call this meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Counselor McBride.
Here.
Counselor Wheatley.
Here.
Counselor Jarnell Holman.
Here.
Counselor Kilberg.
Here.
Mayor Rosacker.
Here.
Counselor Carmen.
Here.
And Counselor Sherri Sinis is absent tonight.
Thank you. Would everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. And we get to start our meeting tonight with the city manager's report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Rusacker and council. And this, of course, is the monthly events for January of twenty twenty five. Thank you, Allison. Public works completed over thirty days, one thousand five hundred and seventy nine work orders. Fifty six was the average per day. There were many meetings coordinating between routine PIO, that's Public Information Officer activities, met with grants coordinator and outlined some priorities for January through June of twenty twenty five. And that was all within the realm of emergency management. And here's just a small selection of the whopping and amazing number of things that our folks do all the time. Quite a large number of footage of pipes cleaned and inspected, water meters replaced, many activities involving fleet repairs. Over at the wastewater treatment plant, you can see that there was a very large amount of treatment done based upon our winter flows. Eight point two six inches of rainfall fall per our weather station for that month. Repair did several repairs to a conveyor, and I believe that is actually a belt, and replaced an IPS fan belt. Not quite sure what that is, but I'm sure it's very important. I know. Water treatment plant, there's the water production number. Average daily water demand, very low this time of year. Annual state reports were completed. Lots of folks who may watch this at home don't realize that all the time we have many, many state reports that we have to fill out on all manner of things. We often wonder what they do with all the data. Who knows? And we ordered additional filter media to be added prior to filter cover construction. And that's going to be coming up this year. And here is the taking down of the Christmas tree. And some other things that public works did included Brucher Street, a meter changeout. North Oxford, a waterline repair, because we had a waterline rupture there. We had North River Street, a waterline repair, and investigation for tough projects on Center Street. As you know, we're planning to resurface Center Street, and that means we have to get ahead of that work and fix anything below grade so as to not have to lift the street later after we do that grind and inlay work. And those pesky beavers, and I don't mean this in any football-related context. They've been up to their old tricks, and so we had to remove the the latest of their dams from Hess Creek and remove some debris wastewater treatment plant. ARPA funds helped us expand the gym for the wellness program for our police officers to keep them in tip-top physical condition, and DUIIs in December was ten. Which is not great, but not terrible. And I think it's gone kaput. Next slide, please. Finance has been working on the following in January. Supplemental budget, which council saw on the twenty first. There were many, many department meetings with many department heads, the CM and finance, on our budget change request forms. These are the BCRs, and as you may recall, these were first started in twenty twenty two. And this is the way which department heads give us requests for how they would like to add things to the budget as it is being built. And of course, they have to justify what the money will be used for, explain indexes connected to inflation or contract expansion or other matters. And once those BCRs are approved, that is where the inputs come from that build our budget. There was a big planning session to distribute tasks and get deadlines going for the upcoming budget cycle. And previews occurred for all finance staff, and the master fee discussions have begun. New slide, please. Also, there were a couple of fairly large payments. The GPEC electrical contractor payment was for the programmable logic controller system, which is the new system that we're using that operates valves electronically at the plant. HDR engineering also ran a fairly substantial payment, also connected to PLC. And Phil Inc., one hundred and sixty four thousand for the Wainouski Block project for the Wainouski Outfall. And payroll was at one point one three millions. New slide, please. Community development was happy to have our new plans examiner, Mariah, join us. As you know, we joined the state mutual aid program. Thank you, council for that. Stellar planning manager Clay Downing has accepted the top post with CPRD. And we console ourselves with the thought that our loss is the communities gain in parks and recreation. That's what we keep telling ourselves every day. The slowdown in building permits is still visible, but more housing is in the planning pipeline between Kalina, Springbrook Hayes Apartments and others. New slide, please. IT has been working steadily to upgrade our Citrix environment. That's our virtual desktop system, a change that has been ruthlessly forced upon us by the Microsoft Corporation, who are forcing us to move from Windows ten, a perfectly good operating system that we're all comfortable with, to Windows eleven. And we're having to do lots of technical changes to make that work as they are not supporting parts of our infrastructure any longer. The IT department started looking at alternative thin clients to see if they could find an even cheaper model. And as you know, thin clients are much cheaper than a standalone computer coming in at, I believe it was three hundred dollars if I remember the number correctly, but they're looking for even cheaper alternatives. New slide, please. The city recorder is planning our first annual retention week. That means that we, the staff, are going to go woo-hoo, grab lots of documents that need to be saved and archived, and we're going to have a virtual spring cleaning party, scanning and saving documents. We're going to try to get everybody as enthused about document retention as I am. And assisted with council strategic planning and is preparing to have an open house at City Hall so people can come in and see the extremely affordable second-hand furniture that we have outfitted City Hall with and remarkably managed to get City Hall back up and running without exceeding the normal facilities budget that we had for this year, said no other city in Oregon. New slide, please. Libraryland, the Cozy Reading Program concludes with a thousand participants. The mascot was found also many times. The regular programming continues, and a tear down is happening of a concrete wall on the north side. ARPA funded so as to make it safer to evacuate the building if there was a fire, because the people that designed that wall in the first place were silly billys, because it would be very hard to lift someone in a wheelchair over a cement wall in the middle of a fire. New slide, please. HR held a protected leave training for supervisors, participated with me in a progressive discipline training for new supervisors coming onboard who need to understand our systems, onboarded a bunch of employees and promoted Mike Grimes to engineering tech three through the usual competitive and double-blind process that we use here. New slide, please. So that's it for January twenty twenty five. As you can see, residents' tax dollars have been very hard at work as usual. Another any questions?
So Microsoft updating our program. Sometimes I'll receive something from Microsoft that says, you know, I need to update my program is. But I haven't received anything on this. Is it just for cities programs? Is that how it's working?
So the business license type for the distributed cloud-based version of Windows had several annoying things start happening that are they're forcing us off of this platform. One of the things is there's an alert coming up deliberately, annoyingly, that obscures part of the screen, and we have to get past that all the time. But secondly, and even more annoyingly, our Duo system, which is how we do cybersecurity, it's not interfacing properly anymore with the current version. They're trying to force us to move on to the new version. So that that's partly is a cybersecurity reason, but it is not great.
Well, we all resist change every chance we get, right? Next on our agenda is public comments. We have one public comment from Sondra Martin. Sonda Martin, sorry about that. Welcome.
Yep, and have a seat. And when you're ready to speak, go ahead and push that button. The red light will come on.
Okay. Uh, councilors, I've come for you tonight because we are living in unprecedented times. We are watching from across the country as our constitution is daily being assaulted by the newly elected president and his unelected oligarchical friends. We are seeing a disregard for the rule of law as duly convicted criminals who assaulted our Capitol Police were pardoned while ordinary civil servants who did and are trying to do their duty are being threatened with persecution. We are seeing our nation's economy get upended by the unlawful actions of this president and his friends. We are seeing all of our government websites go dark, and data that doesn't match the ideological preferences of the current administration are being scrubbed. These websites, this data, you're talking about retention of data here in in the city of Newburgh. This is stuff that our healthcare providers and scientists and public officials rely on to take care of us, our nation's people. We are seeing massive breaches breaches of our nation's information and the beginnings of assaults against our very constitutional freedoms and the freedoms of people of color, indigenous people, women, immigrants, and the LGBTQIA folks. We've seen Native Americans, citizens, military veterans, grandmothers, toddlers, detained for the very crime of looking Hispanic or speaking Spanish. And now granted, this is happening very far away right now. It's easy to sit on our hands here in Newburgh and just wait because it's not really affecting us yet. But make no mistake, this coup, the lawlessness, degradation of the very values in the constitution that makes our country what it is, are going to trickle down to Oregon and to Yammhill County and to Newburgh. And when the pressure comes, when the threats to withhold funds come, as it will, are we going to look the other way as somebody else's freedoms get taken away? Because we need the money or we don't want to stand up? We need to be ready to stand firm. We need to be prepared with our answer when we are asked to do the things that are unconstitutional or just simply wrong. I'm asking the city council of Newburgh and the mayor to go on record in saying that they will stand by their oath to abide by the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Oregon and our city charter. I want you to publicly say that you are going to stand up for the rights of those who are going to be the most vulnerable residents of our city, people of color, homeless, poor, disabled, LGBTQIA, and women, and that you will not let go of your strive values because they're DEI and nobody likes DEI anymore. And you're not going to let the Newburgh Library start banning books because they don't match somebody's ideological preferences. And we need to know that our police department will uphold its oath to the constitution as opposed to the person who holds the office of president, especially given the known presence of some officers on the force who are known in social media circles for making statements that don't shine a good light on their law enforcement position and that the trust that the community must place in them by the virtue of what they are hired to do. It's not a time for wavering. It's not a time for giving wishy-washy answers. I've already said my oath. All, you know, I don't have to just say anymore. It's not a time to say stay silent because the problem is not yet at our door. If we don't start fortifying our backbones now and publicly taking a stand, it's going to be so much easier to just fall in line when the pressure comes. And we need, as our elected councilors and mayor and police chiefs and everybody else that's in charge of the city of Newburgh, we need you to publicly take a stand. And hey, we're watching, the vulnerable residents are watching, the children of Newburgh are watching to see what kind of future is coming for them. What's your plan? Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. We have two items on it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent counter as written here.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as written. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Now we're here for new business and the first, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, come on later. The first item on the agenda is the downtown, Newburgh Downtown Coalition. Who are they? What do they do for us? And we have some wonderful people here to talk to us today. Welcome, Brandon. Your your friends left you sitting back there.
Just me today. Hope that's all right. They're here for moral support. Uh, good evening, mayor and councilors. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, my name is Brandon Anderson alongside with Kate Abora, who's here with moral support. I am the co-executive director of the Newburgh Downtown Coalition. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Downtown Coalition, which many of you know, but in case you don't, we are a nonprofit organization dedicated to making our downtown more vibrant, engaging, and beautiful for residents, businesses, and tourists alike. Our mission is to foster a thriving downtown, one that supports local businesses, encourages community events, and creates an inviting atmosphere that acts as a cultural and economic epicenter for Newburgh and the surrounding area. Now, I joined the Newburgh Downtown Coalition in June twenty twenty four, and after settling into the role, I learned pretty quickly that the coalition was financially limping by every single month, even with low overhead. We have been able to make it this far thanks to generous donations from private citizens, foundations, and local enterprises. However, those funds went to extending operational runway that we reapproach every few months, leading to a cycle of inefficiency that I hope to correct through community partnership. In short, I'm here to request the council's consideration of consistent annual funding dedicated to supporting the Newburgh Downtown Coalition and its mission. This funding would help relieve the time pressure of consistent on-the-street fundraising to cover operating expenses and allow us to fundraise for projects that would improve very visibly our downtown through beautification events and other community building activities. This funding is critical because it directly supports our operational costs specifically. And while operational costs might not be as visible as some of the beautification projects or larger events, they are the foundation that makes those projects possible. Right now, our organization is run almost entirely by volunteers with very limited resources. That means every dollar we receive for operations allows us to better coordinate events, advocate for businesses, and develop long-term strategies that enhance downtown. The more sustainable our operations, the more effectively we can fundraise, plan, and execute projects that contribute to a more prosperous and inviting downtown. So one of our key goals moving forward to maximize efficiency is returning to the Oregon Main Street Program. This is a statewide initiative that provides invaluable support to downtown organizations like ours, helping communities develop long-term strategies for economic vitality and revitalization. The Oregon Main Street Program has been prominent in Newburgh in the past, including the chapter's facade renewal, um, as well as a cameo grant that helped fund new seats that went in there. Those both came through the Oregon Main Street Organization. By rejoining and reinvesting into this program, we will gain access to grant opportunities that would provide significant funding for downtown improvements, for technical assistance and training on best practices in downtown management and revitalization, and a network of other communities working towards similar goals, allowing us to collaborate and learn from successful programs across Oregon. Being part of Oregon Main Street doesn't just give us resources, it aligns us with a proven framework for long-term downtown success. Communities that participate in this program see measurable improvements in business growth, property values, and community engagement. We want Newburgh to be among those listed. It's worth noting that as a full-time employee or that a full-time employee on staff is a requirement of the Oregon Main Street Program, demonstrating a community's dedication to its downtown community. In addition to supporting local businesses and residents, downtown plays a crucial role in attracting visitors. A strong downtown encourages people to stop, explore, dine, shop, and stay just a little bit longer. In turn, that benefits our local economy. And in fact, one of the four core pillars of the Oregon Main Street Program is tourism-driving initiatives that help stabilize downtown economic activity and the community that supports it. Right now, many of the activities and improvements we coordinate internally, as well as with community partners, such as, shortlist here, Downtown Cleanup, Public Art Council, First Friday, the Newburgh Wednesday Market, Trick or Treat Street, the Holiday Tree Lighting, and other downtown business promotions help create a more inviting atmosphere that naturally attracts tourists. However, with consistent with consistent resources, we could strengthen and add on to these efforts to make an even greater impact on our tourism economy. That's why we're interested in pursuing a funding model agreement that will help ensure our success and sustainability going forward. After much discussion over the past several months, the Newburgh Downtown Coalition is requesting two point five percent of the total transient lodging tax or TLT dollars of the next budget cycle. This percentage is enough to directly cover our operational costs, meaning that any additional contribution raised would go directly to downtown improvement through beautification events, wayfinding, and more. We've seen TLT dollars effectively be used in neighboring communities such as Dundee in ways that align directly with NDC's stated purpose and activities. By putting the dollars to use locally, we not only support but bolster existing and external marketing for Newburgh. The Newburgh Downtown Coalition is also in favor of increasing the total TLT collection from nine to nine and a half or ten percent, given that that increase would go entirely to our organization. This increase and its stipulations are endorsed by the Allison Inn and Spa voting owner, Lonnie Parrish, also an NDC board member, along with her family. As we continue growing our tourism economy, investing a portion of TLT dollars into a downtown is a strategic way to strengthen our tourism economy while making Newburgh an even more attractive destination. It's a self-feeding engine that has the power to start turning, but it needs the fuel. Lastly, we're seeking contributions from the city of Newburgh to provide community development funds to the Newburgh Downtown Coalition. At most recent review, there's roughly five thousand two hundred and forty dollars in that fund, which would help our organization remain operational until the next budgetary cycle, when more funding could materialize. We're also requesting that the Newburgh Downtown Coalition be written into the budget in the future to provide a more stable source of funding going forward and show the community that the city believes downtown Newburgh is worth investing in. The Newburgh Downtown Coalition is committed to making a downtown a vibrant and successful part of this community. Any currently available community development funding would be well appreciated during a very lean time in this organization's history. Consistent long-term funding would allow us to become a more effective fundraising and project-driven organization. With continued support, including future budget allocations, we can return to the Oregon Main Street Program, unlock additional funding and grant opportunities, and enhance our impact on both residents and visitors. As we look ahead to the next budget cycle, we encourage the city to consider the role that TLT funds could play into supporting downtown improvement and beautification efforts. A stronger, more inviting downtown benefits not just the businesses within it, but the entire community by making Newburgh a more desirable place to live, work, and visit. Thank you so much for your time and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Um, what kind of programs would you do if you had more money than the two point five percent you're requesting?
If we had more, I think it's about reinvesting into that Main Street side. Um, you know, pulling more in through the Public Art Council to increase beautification efforts. There's also a part that is largely untapped right now with the downtown merchants and not being able to support them properly. Um, to physically improve, we're talking hanging baskets, um, street cleaning, window cleaning, facade cleaning. Um, and then I think arguably right at the top of that list is providing us the operational space to be able to apply for more grants. You know, when you're just fundraising one day after the next in order to make it the next month, it makes it really difficult to have the space to look and really put the effort into bringing that grant money into town. Um, knowing that our operational costs are covered means that we can go for those grants and then develop the matching funds for those grants without having to pull every resource we have in this community. Um, and then the last part of that is it's always hard to look that far forward when we're looking two, three months ahead and seeing the end of the runway there.
So how many owners that own the buildings, not the businesses, but the buildings, live in Newburgh or or I used to hear, I don't know if it's true or not anymore, but I used to hear that most of the owners were people that lived outside of Newburgh. And so I was just curious what what that is, that what that ratio is. And I'm always curious if why doesn't an owner want to keep up their building and show pride of ownership? I do mine. I try to. And so that's always the the concept, and I'm not against what you guys are doing, please understand me, but the concept that they should have somebody else, you guys and us trying to fix their buildings up, I don't understand that. Why don't they do it themselves?
No, it's a very fair question. And I think that to take that piece by piece to start, I feel, and this is something I wrote down a note to go and actually look up that data, but we do have a lot of great community partners that are local and local being regional, you know, they might live in McMinnville or Dayton or something. But um, we do have a large portion. They are relatively active. Um, and a good example is the former La Oke Space. That's a Portland owner, but he is taking that initiative to start painting. So I think that if the tides start turning a bit, that does help. We do have some from that are either out of the state or even out of the country. Um, and those are ones that we have less communication with, absolutely. I think that as a downtown, um, there is a piece there that we can make a market interest or a market change right out of the gate to be able to show those. And if we can see those short-term gains, knowing that communication could be kind of tough, that's where I see that. There is a part that I agree. I think everybody should take ownership over their own building, me as Brandon, right? Not necessarily representing NDC. But I also see the challenges that come with building ownership, international building ownership or national. And, um, you know, I I see us here and us being able to make a difference here. And, um, most importantly, in a time where tourism, I believe in Newburgh, was, uh, was slightly up this past year, but across the entire state has stagnated or dropped. And so if there's some low-hanging fruit where we can get people driving through ninety-nine and be like, wow, they really care about this town, I want to take that opportunity. Yeah.
Um, you said you wanted two point five percent from Taste. Um, how much would that be? Maybe that's a Katie question, just off the top of your head. I'm just curious. Okay, okay.
While we're looking for that, Will, I have you been part of these discussions? Is this new to you?
The Downtown Coalition asked me how much community support funds there were right now. That's kind of all I've been involved in at this point. And the two and a half percent of our share would probably be in the low tens of thousands, eleven, fifteen thousand dollars, something like that. And that's just of our share. So.
Probably about thirteen thousand nine. So yeah, very close.
Awesome. Thank you.
And yeah, I got you, Terry. Um, and to be clear, we're not asking for two point five percent of Taste's thirty-five percent. We're asking for two point five percent of the entire pie. So that would bring Taste's share down to thirty-three point five. Am I doing thirty-two point five? Thirty-two point five.
But twenty-five grand. But twenty-five grand.
All right, thank you very much.
I'm still learning about you guys. What, what have you normally been operating within? Like, what's your budget been so far?
Budget's been slim. I, I mean annually, fifty thousand dollars or so, and then we, and as operational costs, I believe last year we have, we do have our accountant in the audience right now, so she might be able to help us out a little bit, but and then we've been able to fundraise for specific initiatives like the Newburgh Public Art Council, and that operates as its own separate wing. But happy to provide numbers that are a little bit more on a spreadsheet. And I think that's the, the crux of it, is having to go to members of this community, to various enterprise and organizational partners, to ask them for money that goes into an operational budget, that goes to pay somebody's salary, is a lot more difficult of an ask than would you like to sponsor a hanging basket? That is a very visible thing that we can say thank you for. However, one's not possible without the other, so as we've continued to kind of hit our head against the wall over the past year, we see an opportunity to get ahead of that, and then, like I said, once the engine starts churning, I think, you know, we are able to develop partnerships, promote those partnerships, and show people that are inherently invested in, into downtown. We feel very strongly that that's going to continue on its way.
Hold on. All right. We don't normally turn this into an audience event at this point, so go ahead, make whatever statements you want to make.
Hi, I'm Kate Iborra. I am the new co-executive director of the Downtown Coalition. I just wanted to circle back, Mike, to your question about why the building owners or why the business owners aren't taking care of those outside appearances. This morning, I had a meeting with one of our merchants just to talk about what we can do that would make the most impact. That is coordinating with those merchants to where they're like, yeah, I can give a piece of my budget to go into funding that cleaning, to go into funding that wine barrel, to go into funding flower plant, like planters. So it is with contribution from them that we would be able to do those projects if we have our operational finances covered.
I personally love this, especially when you talk about the beautification and of downtown and making it more vibrant. But you also talked about advertising, which there's an organization in town that already does that. How would that, how would that work? Who would be your target? How would you track its efficiency, those types of things?
Yeah, so we, we are pretty, knowing that there is quite literally an external, an agency that's working on external marketing, we are very focused on promoting the events and the things that will bring people downtown. Now, a lot of that will happen in concert with our friends at Taste Newburgh, but I think that our, our focus is going to be, this is a downtown business that's doing something that's exciting, and that's, that's our Promotions Committee, which Kate is helping lead up. There, with Taste Newburgh, their marketing activities have to happen, I believe it's 45 miles out. Ours, that leaves our locals that provide the vibrancy that, that is our downtown and the downtown events, without knowing what's happening if we were to give them all of our marketing activities, right, because by their, I don't know if it's bylaws or how they work, but everything needs to be pushed further out. So for us, we think if, if I were a tourist walking through and only saw a tourist downtown, that'd be kind of interesting, but we need a blend of the both of them, and that's, that's where we're trying to focus on. Let's remind our 26,000 people that live here, 9,000 households or so, that downtown Newburgh's worth visiting, and it's a great time to come on down, yeah.
Great job. I just want to say that I support ongoing funding for Downtown Coalition. I think it marries well with our council goals. I think conversations that we've been having, I'm also a supporter of Taste and the Chamber, and I think all three are needed and need to be funded. I would love if we had a work session or something in the future, couple meetings to have this conversation and flush it out, and maybe that we could see numbers together. But great job, and I'm excited, Kate, that you're coming in as co-executive director, so great work.
Again, I, I also support this. I think giving money, TLT dollars specifically, to organizations, you know, when you can't really see the benefits of it, it just makes it a little bit hard for me to, like, what are we getting? Are we getting the bang for our buck? And I also support a work session to find out what it is you guys can do for, you know, more in-depth local businesses. Why are you asking for, you said you needed a, a split of, we talked, we were talking about advertising, but why wouldn't you ask for more to make these downtown businesses look more beautiful, so people will stop in Newburgh?
I think that this is a starting point, because exactly to your point, we, we've only seen the end of the runway. That's so close every time, right, and so when we have been questioning whether our organization's going to be around over the next year, or whether or not, then we look in the short term to see how we can make the most impact with whatever we have left. So now that we're able to say, we, you know, taking a, a look back and say, all right, this is our, with this budgetary cycle coming up, this is our shot that we have to solidify this organization, that's when we're able to actually do strategic planning for the next couple of years, especially with the new budget cycle that we have coming up, to know, okay, if we're written in for the next two years, we can do some real planning, make some real change, make some real difference. I think that part of us asking for more would be that increase in, in the TLT. That would be a significant amount of money that would make us, would give us everything that we would need at this point to be effective going forward and be able to reinvest that right back into downtown, where I think right now the tourism fund from the marketing side is lacking because all of it's going externally, outside of jobs that are, you know, the two jobs that are through there. So this is a really good way to use some of those tourism dollars and bring it right back into our downtown to have some real market improvement. And then the beauty of that is we're tied to the success of tourism, that we have to be promoting tourism activities, or at least a positive tourism experience, because we want that number to go up as well.
So the budget cycle that's due to start very soon, actually, staff is planning to propose an enlarged community support line item, specifically because of some discussions about supporting NDC better and more, which the Honorable Mayor and I have been discussing that, how, ways that we can support NDC, because obviously, successful NDC is critical, and we agree. I would, of course, as I am duty-bound, to sound a note of caution about the, taking anything from the general fund portion of TLT, obviously, it's one of our few dependable sources for, of general fund money when we have staff that depend upon that for COLAs and other increases, but, you know, these two things are not mutually exclusive.
And, Will, maybe, and maybe James, you might know, I've asked before if TLT dollars could be used to make improvements downtown for tourism purposes, you know, making things more vibrant, making the, you know, washing awnings, painting buildings, whatever facelifts buildings might need. And I was told that there might be other cities that do that, so I just, I guess I want to know, is it legal to do that with TLT dollars? And if so, what other cities are doing this, and maybe you know the answer to that.
Yeah, I'll jump in, our, yeah, using a couple different communities precedent, but most frequently was Dundee. They used TLT dollars to fund downtown holiday lights display. They're also using it to run their Third Thursday, partially.
Hold on, I, I mean, you're given legal advice and you're not our attorney, so if we have a legal question as to whether or not it's allowed, then we should allow our attorney to weigh in, which is who the question was posed to in the first place. Thank you very much for your participation. Obviously, we have some further discussions on this matter. James, would you weigh in as to whether, whether or not that's allowed?
Sure, sure, so, Councilor Crum, you named a number of different kinds of types of activities when it comes to what I'll call physical improvements to buildings in the downtown area. I do know that other cities do it. As far as kind of challenges, legal challenges to those particular uses, there, there isn't a body of case law out there dealing with challenges, but I will say that it's a very, if we're talking specifically about building improvement, like, you know, maybe power washing, you know, siding to improve cleanliness and appearance of downtown, that is a defensible use, and it hasn't been, I'll say, it hasn't been defeated by any sort of challenge or, or contest, if you will.
It's not a question for them, but maybe it's a discussion question for you.
Thank, thank you for coming. We're going to have some more discussion.
So what would, so if we were to have a work session, which I know everyone needs to weigh in on that, but what would, would anything stop us from releasing the $5,000 that we have in the community funds tonight to NDC by way of a motion? If I were to call, call a motion?
No, there's
Since it's a business, it's a business item, so you could do it.
There's no limitation to doing that, and merely with a nod of assent, then that would, I would do that.
Can I follow on? The reason I'm asking is because I know, I think it was shared that they have a runway through February. So waiting till the budget cycle will not allow them to stay open, so that, that's, that's my clarification.
So what is, Will, what's the process that we've normally done, because I, I don't want to just give this money away if there's a process, an application, or does other people know about it? I just don't want to just jump in.
So actually, in my, gosh, same-city manager, three and a half years. In my short time with the city, I've seen a couple of different things done. I've seen a letter be sent to council formally requesting support from the community line item. I've also seen approaches come to the dais and ask for community support. And generally, it's, obviously, it's not complicated, it's a very small amount of money, and it would require a motion, I would suggest.
So, so then we can just, I mean, we could, we could do that tonight, then?
I, it is a matter of trying to be consistent. Why would we approve this outside of our budgeting process with our budget committee?
Because this line item has already been budgeted for this purpose. It's the community support line item for this year, so we, we have a small fund every year. It varies between 10 and 20,000 dollars depending upon the budget process. It's specifically for supporting community groups, so, for example, it has been used in the past to help deal with the, getting the Christmas tree put up. It has been used in the past to help the animal shelter, but it's already an approved use in this budget cycle that we're in this year.
Does that money come with a contract, or, you know, this 5,000 is to be used for this? I mean, I don't recall they said exactly what it was going to go towards. Could you elaborate?
I don't think I could opine on specific uses for the money. I think I would though say that in the past, we hadn't, we haven't made the tree folks sign a contract, or we haven't made the animal shelter break down, you know, although at the animal shelter, I believe, did explain the number of animals that were helped every month or something when they last came here.
I mean, I would like to know what it's going towards. What does that mean? Okay. The concern I have if we don't approve this either today or in, at our next council meeting, or find another source of funding is, and I don't mean to put NDC on the spot, but they've cycled through executive directors really every six months to a year. And we are not able to gain the momentum that we need and the preparation that we're doing around our beautification efforts if we don't have a stable executive director in the seat, and I'm really excited to see that Kate has stepped in as a co-executive director, as we know Brandon also is killing it with Newsberg, so I think my hope is that we don't, we have the opportunity now to approve a small sum of money to get them through the next couple of months and keep and retain the two executive directors that are here tonight.
So this is totally within the city manager's authority to spend that money in whatever way he chooses. So that's really, he doesn't need our approval tonight to do that if he thinks that this is a legitimate budget item. The interesting thing that's going on is that there have been many discussions about this particular plan that most of you and I have not been part of. This is just one-third of the discussions that have been going on. There's more to it than this. It is going to come up in the next meeting, and it sounds like we had better plan on some more time to discuss it. This is an item that is, I mean, whatever we agree to give to this organization, we're going to have to take away from another budget item, so please keep that in mind that, you know, this is not just extra money that's out there, or free money that's available to do that with, so we will make this part of, of the next meeting agenda, if I understood you correctly, and we'll go, we'll go from there.
So just, just for clarity, should I add a discussion element to the next session prior to considering any contracts or anything?
I think, I mean, our plan to make it the same agenda item, I think, works just fine, but yes, I think we should plan on it taking a little more time than, than what we were thinking.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, I understand.
So I agree. Are we, so are we saying tonight that Will, we are, we are giving Will the nod that he has the authority to make the decision on the $5,000? Just to be clear, we are all saying that he has the authority to do that.
Understood, thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda. Is the property tax present, is that right? Oh, my code maintenance package. I'm getting new glasses soon, don't worry.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Scott Segal, Community Development Director. This evening, you have a work session scheduled on the Community Development Code Maintenance Amendments. This is in ordinance 2025, 20, or 2933, and consistent with the City Council's policy on considering legislative matters here before you this evening, to provide an overview on the package of code amendments. There's a lot of content here, so what I would suggest we do is use this as an opportunity to become familiar with material if you're, as you're going through and preparing for the public hearing, which is now scheduled for February 18th, what I'd like to do is provide some wayfinding, rather than going, you know, page by page or line by line, there is an index and a summary of what is proposed here, and what I'd like to do is just offer, maybe by exception, if there's what is proposed here. And what I'd like to do is just offer, maybe by exception, if there are certain items that you'd like me to dive into, I'm here to do that this evening. Or if you have questions about particular policy matters, happy to go over those. But just by way of background, this is brought to you as a significant project in the Planning Division Work Program. It is consistent, we believe, in alignment with the City Council's goal for customer service. And I'll say a few words about that here. Code maintenance is intended to clarify and improve predictability and efficiency in the permit process through corrections, definitions, formatting changes, and in some cases revisions to existing regulations to maintain compliance with state and federal law. The maintenance amendments were identified through use and application of the code as we assist customers in the Planning Division. Frequently, we have questions of interpretation and code maintenance and one of the objectives of code maintenance is to minimize or reduce the the number of instances where staff have to interpret the code. So the code is, to the extent possible, prescriptive, clear and objective and predictable. Maintenance amendments may also include minor policy changes to improve customer service and operational efficiency. For example, in use and application of the code, what we found, and this is not unusual in other jurisdictions that I've worked with over many years, our parking standards are fairly rigid. It's a prescriptive code. It is really a one size fits all formula of parking requirements that are based on uses that are allowed in each of our zones. And in some ways, that's good, right? You want to have predictability in those standards. But what we find is that over time, as technology, changes in technology, changes in business practices and just business models in general, that parking standards generally don't keep up with that. And so we do have some built in flexibility in our ordinance currently that allows for minor adjustments or reductions to required parking, but that's limited and it's really meant to address those standards that we currently have prescribed in our code. It doesn't really consider different models of different business models. So really, the the one policy change that is recommended or is proposed as part of this project is to adopt a more of a qualitative evaluation of different uses or types of business models that do not fit well into our existing prescriptive table of parking standards. And it's a parking study, so it's a, it's a process that is initiated by the business owner or the applicant. They come to the city and they ask for an alternative approach to determining the required quantity of parking for their development. It's a process or an approach that other jurisdictions use fairly often in our area and around the country. And it's, I'm happy to sort of go over that and discuss what what that's about. But I wanted to point that out because generally code maintenance is not a time when we propose new zoning or significant policy changes to the code. Code maintenance, as I, you know, one way to think of it is if we were rewriting the code in its entirety, we might be, you know, replacing an operating system in a computer, right? Or we'll be replacing a car. Code maintenance is more like we're doing some tune ups. If it's a patch or a new app that we're adopting or we're incorporating into the code to help with just how it operates and how it performs under different different situations or different development proposals. It is not an overhaul or rewrite of our zoning ordinance. It's not a zone change and it's certainly not a change in permissible uses or development standards that would limit the use of property in any way. So there shouldn't be any of that in here and I've reviewed it with staff and we're confident that we're not proposing anything that would diminish anyone's property rights or their ability to use their land. In fact, if we were, the city would be required to mail what's called a measure 56 notice to all of the property owners who might be affected by that change. And that's not what's proposed here. So I just wanted to put that out there. This package is organized in the following manner. There are two code amendment attachments and they're both labeled Exhibits A1. And there's an A1A that is an annotated version of the code amendments, and that's the first document that you see in in the attachments after after the ordinance. So the ordinance is Exhibit A and Exhibit A1A is the the package of code amendments with commentary. And so we wanted to put that first in front of you so that you can see sort of what the what the rationale is for each of those changes and what changes are actually being proposed there. In the RCA itself, behind the the one and a half page summary, executive summary, there is a table and that extends over six pages and that table is an index to the code amendments. And so if you flip to that page, it's page three of the RCA. That's referencing the specific pages within that attachment, A1A. And it's describing the topic. So in the first instance, on page four of A1A, there's a proposed amendment to a definition. And then also on that table is a description of why we're proposing those changes. And so what I thought I would do, I'll, I'll stop there. If there are any questions about just the organization and the purpose and need for what we have here, I'm happy to answer any questions. And then what I'd like to do is just by go through these six pages just at a very high level to go over what's contained here. And so if you did have any questions about what'll be coming before you in a public hearing on the 18th, we can address those or we can drill down into the the code amendment document if you, if you want to go there. So on page three of the RCA, you'll see the first sort of tranche of of amendments are all changes to Newburgh Municipal Code Title 15.100 or Chapter 15100. And this is, these are the procedures and general provisions of the code. So this is that part of the development code that tells you how you go about getting a permit or approval for what you want to do. It also provides sort of the operating procedures and application requirements. The first page of of the table, you'll see that we're making an update to a definition of interior yard and also what are considered to be exempt accessory structures. And the reason for that is that the building code exempts structures in residential structures, accessory buildings like sheds that are less than 200 square feet and 10 feet in height. And there was a change to the building code that if they're less than 200 square feet and also less than 15 feet in height, there's no building permit required. So that that change is aligning with that. So that's an example of where a definitional change or a change to be consistent with it with between planning and building is proposed. So I won't belabor that, but I wanted to give you an idea of our thought process on that. The standards for commercial accessory structures are different and we're not proposing to change those here. There are changes here to the appeals or or actually clarification of the appeals process. And so it was pointed out that appeals of historic landmark decisions made by staff go to the Historic Preservation Commission, just different than other appeals of type two decisions, which would go to the planning commission. So we've proposed that clarification here. We've also clarified that there's an appeals process for middle housing land divisions and that those must be filed within 14 days. So you kind of get the idea there. That's, these are all examples of clarifications to the code and and changes that are consistent with sort of the construction of of the code elsewhere. Under, on page five, Appeals, you'll see that it, we're making changes from made a must. And that's an important clarification because it isn't actually a requirement if you're filing an appeal that it must be timely. You have to meet the deadline for filing that appeal. So changing the language from made a must is making that enforceable or at least making it operate correctly. So some of the clarifications are actually necessary to make sure that that the code is having its intended result. Another sort of category of code updates or maintenance amendments that you'll see here in in the table when you see references to ORS Oregon Revised Statutes, those are changes that are proposed to align our code with requirements and state law. These are not optional provisions. These are things that we need to make sure that we're doing according to state, state law. And the first one that you see on that page three is a reference to measure 56. We still call it measure 56 even though it was decades ago. That's sort of the, the, the term of art. The statutes are referenced here because we have certain noticing requirements that go with that and we're wanting to make sure that's explicit in the code. It's not changing what we do. It's just making it clear that we must do it. One change to our code that's actually a process improvement and also aligns with state law. Believe it or not, the state has made process improvements in their planning codes over time is that when we're making changes to our development code or considering a zone change or another land use decision that is a legislative matter, the state requires that we notice, that we notify the Department of Land Conservation and Development. It used to be 45 days before the first hearing. Now it's 35 days. And the state made that change in their requirement when Metro adopted a similar requirement that notice must be provided to that agency in 35 days. And some of us who are in the Portland metro area said, can you two talk to each other, the state and metro, and get your deadlines lined up? And they did that. So the state requirement is now 35 days. It provides plenty of time for DLCD to review our proposals. So but our code still says 45 days. So if we don't change that, we're going to be notifying the state, you know, we're going to be delaying our process unnecessarily. Yeah. Oh, and then the next, the next item, the last item on that page three is a similar, I would say it's a process improvement. We have a requirement to post notices on a development site and also mail a notice of the application to the surrounding property owners within 500 feet. But the the timing on those two notices are different. So I think the mailed notice, I believe, is 20 days and then the posting is only 10 days. And we wanted, I might have those two reversed, but we wanted to make those the same so that when you receive a notice and, you know, there's also a sign that goes up or there isn't one ahead of the other because then you might be questioning what's actually going on. So any questions about that content so far? Hopefully pretty straightforward.
I have a question about the first one you started with, the, the accessory structures.
Yes.
Can you, can you go over that again? And then I think I have some questions.
Okay. Yes, so that would be on page four of the attachment A1A. And so currently in our definitions, there is a definition for accessory structure exempt. And so these are accessory structures that are exempt from planning review. So this is planning, planning review, like type one review or type two review. And it says a structure for which a permit is not required by the applicable building code. So it's trying to align, you know, when we do planning review, if there's a building permit also required. So when there is a permit, for which a permit is not required by the applicable building code and which may or may not be subject to the standards of this code. And this is all existing language. It says until amended, this includes but is not limited to the following structures, accessory to single family and two family dwellings. So accessory structures to a residence. And it lists those accessory structures that are exempt. And currently, number one is non-habitable, one story, detached accessory structures used as tool and storage sheds, platehouses and similar uses, provided the floor area does not exceed 200 square feet and a height of, and it currently reads 10 feet, measured from the finished floor level to the average height of the roof surface. And the change is to, from 10 feet to 15 feet. Not, well, taller and that's, that's measured to the midpoint of the cable.
I thought when you said it originally, you said it's now 200 square feet. Is that?
It's currently, and if I misspoke, I apologize. Currently, it's 200 square feet and there's no change to that.
Okay. So this would normally be a tool shed or or a, a, a man cave or something along that nature. So now we're allowing it to go 15 feet high without any kind of planning review? I mean, the neighbors don't get an opportunity to weigh in on the fact that you're putting a nearly two story building in your backyard?
Currently, there would be no public comment or notice for, really for any single family dwelling. And this would be an accessory structure to a single family dwelling. So that's correct. There's no notice and no opportunity to comment on that accessory structure today. And and if it's allowed to go up to 15 feet, well, it is allowed to go up to 15 feet by code. It's just a question of whether it has planning review or not. It's supposed to meet setbacks and height limitations.
Yeah, and that's generally the purpose of having the planning review is to make sure that you're not putting it too close to neighbor's yard. So we're now exempting all planning reviews?
So, yeah, and I should, I should probably clarify. So planning reviews all structural building permits? So, yes, planning would still review those. It wouldn't have a building permit though. So I think that's your point. If it doesn't have a building permit and planning doesn't review it, then is there a concern about it exceeding 15 feet or what is the concern?
Well, the, I mean, the biggest mistake people make is they make them put them right next to the property line rather than the five or 10 feet away that the code requires. So now we're going to allow people to build these without you weighing in and then leaving it up to the neighbors to say, hey, that's too close to my fence. It's a fire hazard and it has to be moved?
Yeah. So there isn't, so currently planning, yeah, that is a risk. So the accessory structures that that folks can put in today, the tough sheds and the other structures that they can put in, provided they meet setbacks, would it, would be able to continue to do that without a building permit being required? And this is aligning that with the building code so that that's correct. If this, if you were, if you were to approve this change, planning, where planning would currently review through a type one process an accessory structure that is more than 10 feet in height and not more than 200 square feet, they wouldn't be reviewing that extra five feet.
Are these required changes or are these things that are subjected?
They're not required. The change was, the intent of this change is to align it with the building code. So if there's no building permit required, what would we be gaining by having planning review that that accessory structure?
Just to understand a little bit more, so the thrust of some of these is to align the two halves of the house together more closely so that the process can be more smooth and create faster approvals, right?
That's right. Because if I, if I'm a homeowner and I'm putting in a shed and I understand from reading the code or talking with someone in the building department that, oh, I don't need a building permit for that, then, but I have to go through planning review? What is planning reviewing exactly? Like, I know what the setbacks are. I'm going to comply with that. So it is meant for efficiency and to avoid that, that extra review. So again, now this is some, this, this is something that the council could, planning commission is recommended approval of amendments when it comes before the council, you'll, you know, be able to consider which of these amendments you want to accept and which ones you do not. And if you have questions or further questions that I can research and that I can come back on the 18th with more information on those, I'm happy to do that. Okay. So the next, on page four of the table, or the So the next, on page four of the table or the R C A, part two of these tables, much of what you see in the first several line items are changes to the proceeds, changes to the expiration date and the ability for applicants to extend the timeline for a permit. So currently for site design review approvals, variances, code adjustments, any number of land use applications, those permits are generally good or they're valid for, you know, say, two years, except conditional use permits are valid for one year, I believe. Yeah, actually, I'm going to turn to that page so I can reference that correctly. So on page nine of that attachment, A one A. So, okay, I'm going to reverse and correct myself. These, these permits, these land use approvals, code adjustments, variances, site design review applications, are, they're valid for, in this case, one year for code adjustment or site design review. And you essentially have to exercise your right and get your building permit and begin your project or that permit expires. And what we're trying to do with these changes for improved sort of customer service and supporting residents and business owners is to allow the, or to extend how long these permits are valid to two years, which is generally sort of the state of the practice. When we looked at other jurisdictions and we researched timelines, extensions and expiration dates and other communities' codes, they generally afford more time for people to complete their projects. And there's an attachment to the R C A attachment F that is expirations and extensions analysis. So we looked at that. And what we're proposing to do is make these permits valid for two years from the effective date of the decision and then allow for extensions of an additional twelve months each not to exceed a total of five years. And those extensions would only be allowed or granted where the the relevant codes have not changed. So essentially, or the scope of the project hasn't changed. So if you were approved under one set of regulations today and you, because of any variety of reasons, the market or getting a loan or, you know, picking up a new partner, you're not able to execute on that in a year, you could ask for an extension of up to twelve months. And if the standards have not changed or your project has not changed in its scope in a way that would, it would be contrary to the code at that point, you could get an extension for twelve months. And so that would be available for not, not more than a total of five years. So that's a very business friendly sort of approach to permitting. And you can consider whether that should be more or less. When we have, when we looked at other jurisdictions and compared our code to theirs, we found that ours was, it seemed like it was overly restrictive. And you think about, you know, building, you get your approval and, you know, in the spring and you get your, you know, building permits in the, you know, the summer or the fall, are you able to actually complete your project in a timely manner? We want to give people the flexibility to be able to build out their projects in a reasonable amount of time. So there are several changes that are recommended in this package that are trying to accomplish that goal of providing more flexibility within reason, provided the project would still comply with our code at that point. That's for code adjustments, variances, site design review and land division approvals are already at two years, I believe. But conditional use permits, which are addressed on the next page at the top of page five, conditional use permits are one year. And we're proposing that those would continue to be those would have a shorter potential extension that those could be extended not to exceed three years. And so the reason for, and that's on page eighteen of the attachment. And the reason for that is that uses that are permitted only with approval of a conditional use permit are considered to be, you know, they're not permitted outright in the zone and they're evaluated based on compatibility and relationship to other surrounding uses. And so they're conditionally approved based on the context and based on consideration of their impacts on the surrounding neighbors. And so over a period of three years, that surrounding context, that neighborhood can change, you know, considerably if there's development on neighboring properties. So it was our opinion, our recommendation that affording, affording some additional flexibility, be able to extend those permits, but not to the extent that five years would be allowed for other types of approvals. We were recommending three years. And so that's why there's a different timeline on that. So that's, those are the changes to the procedures. There's a change in, at the bottom of, near, near the bottom of page four that relates to properties that have jurisdictional wetlands. And the proposal is to align the application requirements for those with, between land divisions and site design review applications. We, we should be asking for the same type of information and we want to make sure that we're asking for information that's going to be required by other jurisdictions, by other agencies, the Department of State Lands, the Oregon Department of State Lands, and that we're not requiring an analysis or a study that is outside of that scope. We don't want to duplicate effort. We want to make sure that if state approval is required for their project and the state requires that they delineate wetlands, that we're not requiring any more than that. And we're also asking them to show that what they're proposing to do may be approved by the state so that we're not approving something that would be contrary to what the state would approve. And this is, this is actually, you know, in some ways, a business process improvement because someone goes through our process and we, you know, we're, we review all of our standards and we give them the green light, but only to find out later that their project wasn't even viable with the state. Now they have to come back through our process and modify the plan or maybe their plan isn't even approvable anymore. So that's the background on wetlands. That's why you see it mentioned here twice because we want to make sure that those application requirements are what the state is looking for and also that they're consistent from one chapter to the next. It's not requiring anything more than what we would already require. It's referencing the correct maps. So the state wetlands inventory is what the Oregon Department of State Lands uses. And I'll, I'll just leave it at that. The next page of amendments that are summarized in the R C A on pages, on page five, I think we've covered some of the procedural changes already. The annexations at the bottom of page five, this is, this is a big one. So when you, when you look through the, the code amendments package, you'll see a lot of strikeouts and underlines, a lot of changes to that section of our code. And the reason for that is that state law changed in, I believe, twenty sixteen that basically preempted some language in our code that requires a vote, a popular vote, a community wide vote on annexation petitions or annexation requests. And there are still some types of annexations that can be put to a vote. And what we're, what we've done in this document is to sort of parse out what are those applications? What are the proper procedures for annexations? And the more routine types of requests that we get, an individual property that's coming into develop or connect to public sewer, those types of annexation requests are not put to a popular vote. Those are reviewed and recommended by the planning commission and the city council makes that final decision. So there's also some language in the city charter that's sort of anachronistic that at some point you might want to take, you know, revisit and an update. But it's really that popular vote procedure is not effective and we don't do it. The cases where an election would be possible is where the owners of property in a certain area approach the city and they say, we want to annex into the city and we want the city to consider a group, a larger area that involves more than just those individuals who are giving their consent to annex. And then you could elect, you could decide to put a measure out for that larger area for people to vote on whether or not they want to come in or not. We're not suggesting that the city do that. We just want to make sure that the procedures in our code are not contrary to that. So yeah, so there, there are a lot of different types of annexations and I won't go into all of those here. But those are some of the reasons why we're proposing to update and correct the annexation chapter. On page six of our table, we have, looks like a lot of sort of editorial and
Scott, can I interrupt you, please? I didn't realize this item was going to take this long. We probably ought to go ahead and take a five minute break and, and then come back to it. That's all right.
Of course.
Thank you. Shall we proceed, the meeting? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I have probably just about ten minutes of your time, if that's all right. Okay. So I wanted to note, as you're going through the, the package and preparing for the hearing on the eighteenth, one of the is one, one of the process improvements or customer service changes that we're looking at that is part of those procedures that I went over earlier and I won't go back over it now. But on page, page ten in the packet, you might just put in sort of dog ear that page when you're reviewing it. There's some changes there that sort of clarify how planning and building review building permits. And it occurred to us that the city doesn't require a land use application every time someone builds a house. That would be kind of clunky and inefficient. But single family dwellings and other dwellings are listed as a type one permit. So, yeah, as well as accessory dwellings and things of that nature. And so when I asked the staff about this, I said, well, how do we handle this? Do we have people thought of land use application? Do they pay a fee? Or it goes straight to building permit, right? And they said, yeah, it goes straight to building permit and planning, building, engineering, when fire marshals needs to review it. All of those reviewers still review the plans, but it doesn't have that extra layer of a land use application on top of it. So rather than restructuring our entire code around that, in that, in that section that I flagged for you, we've sort of parsed out which types of permits require that land use application, if it's a type one review, and which ones do not, which are more of a sort of a fast track and just go right to building permit. So you'll see that there. And and of course, the state, I'm going to refer to the state again, requires that whatever procedure we use to review single family homes, detached homes, we must also apply to middle housing, right? So if we had a design review process for single family homes and required public notice and hearings and so on and so forth, which we don't, you know, we could put middle housing through the same process, but we don't. So we have to have sort of a parity between those two. And so that list of, you know, what goes through a type one and what, how do we handle? How do we process those? That's all addressed in that section that I flagged for you. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. So I'm going to jump back to where we were and on, on page six in the, in the summary table again, one, I would consider it to be a policy change, but it's really more of a legal sufficiency change in the code on page, where it says institutional overlay. And that's the second row from the bottom on page six. Currently, and I was really surprised to find this when I, when I read the code for the first time, there, there are areas in the city and George Fox University is a primary area where there is an institutional zone, you know, it's an institution, it's college. And then there are areas that over, or there, there's a, an overlay zone that sits on top of much of that, that campus that is called the institutional overlay zone. But that overlay zone, and I'll have a map for you when you have your hearing, that overlay zone also extends to some outlying properties that are not part of the campus. And I believe that it was set up that way in anticipating, anticipation that the university or other institutions would, would expand or would want to plan for their future, you know, campus. And there's nothing wrong with that, but the, the procedure in our code for making that, making a zone change to institutional or institutional overlay, it, it says that I, as your community fellowman director, can make that change to the map where that overlay exists, that institutional zone can be applied. I think that's how it operates. And, and, and looking at this, and we also asked the city attorney for their opinion on that procedure and we both concluded that it really needs to go through a proper zone change procedure, probably a quasi judicial zone change for those, you know, application of that institutional zone. So that's what we're proposing here. It is an additional step for, you know, that any property owner or that camp, that institution, when they want to expand and they want to apply that institutional zone, they would need to apply for that zone change and go through a public hearing process. There are some similarities between the overlay and the institutional base zone. I won't go into the, sort of the nuances on that, but I just want you to be aware of that. We haven't received any comment from the university. We'll, you know, check in with them and of course, let them know that this is coming before the city. But I want you to be aware of it. So I'll move on to the, the second to last page here on page seven. Let's see, so fences and walls, that's the very first item there. There's language on, on page forty that is, we, we wanted to be clear about what types of fences and walls require a building permit. And this again is another area where building code has changed and we're, you know, sort of chasing that and trying to keep up with it. So there's language in the code that talks about, you know, how tall fences can be before you're required to have a building permit. And it depends on, you know, of course, whether they're retaining walls or if it's a fence that surrounds a swimming pool. There, you know, building codes that govern a lot of that, but it's mostly for kind of awareness and customer service that we've included that in the code. More significantly, I think, the next several items in, in the summary table address parking. And there's a ma, a major reorganization, I'd say reformatting of the parking standards in the code, not a revision to the standards themselves, but beginning on page forty two and running through page fifty three, there are revisions to the text and also the table, the parking table in the code that what we've, what we've tried to do is put all of those numerical standards in one table. So if you're opening a restaurant, you can see this is the minimum that's required. And there's also a maximum in our code. And then, as I discussed earlier, there's also this procedure that we're proposing to add that would allow for one to apply for a parking study where they could propose their, a standard that's unique to their use. And so the example that I like to use is when we had a hotel in another community where I worked and they were really kind of pushing back on our parking code and saying, your, your parking ratio is out of whack with, with industry standards. And, you know, we want to apply for a parking study to modify that. And they said, you know, we don't need one, you know, one space per hotel room in our facility because one, we don't, we never have a hundred percent occupancy. Two, our model has rideshare and we have other ways that people come and go from our hotel. You know, if you're in wine country, there are wineries and other, you know, folks that will take you from place to place. I'm not suggesting that that would be You know, if you're in wine country, there are wineries and other, you know, folks that will take you from place to place. I'm not suggesting that that would be applicable here, but just to have the ability to consider, you know, a different business model and to be able to evaluate that and establish a parking standard that's really calibrated for that business. And, and the procedure that we've proposed to add here has a burden of proof. So they would have to produce data and, you know, evidence from comparable, you know, sort of operations to show that this, you know, the proof of concept that this actually works. And then it would be a discretionary decision. There would be a type two review so that adjacent property owners would be notified and have an opportunity to, you know, to review that or comment on it. So that's the, probably the most significant of the amendments as proposed here. And I'll, I'll conclude with that. If you have any questions or if you wanted me to go back to anything, I'm always available after your meetings and in between meetings to go over anything you might want to discuss before your hearing.
I don't have a question, but I want, I want to just say how organized this is and I appreciate that. It's not exciting reading in my view, but it's well organized and understandable. I appreciate it very much. The work that I, I'm sure your team all contributed. So you could pass that on.
Yeah, I will pass that on. Thank you.
Well, to some extent, Counselor Kilburg just stole my thunder. All I was going to say was, and this is very much in the spirit of how this council has set out how we do business here to be provided with a good executive summary, with a good table that's understandable. And then some time to ask email questions so as to be ready for the actual hearing. And I applaud you, sir.
Well, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to bring this before you. And I, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, there's, there's one other sort of disclaimer on this. And, you know, the writing style and the diction and just sort of the, in some cases, the grammar. We're, we're working with what we've got here. We're not rewriting the ordinance. And so I hope you can bear with us on that. There's some sentence structure and some other things that I wouldn't, I wouldn't write it that way, but I think it's, it, we can understand what it is and we're trying to make it easier to understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next on the agenda is the property tax analysis.
All right. So tonight I brought before you a property tax discussion. This is an info only session. As I'm building the budget, I'm looking forward to discussing whether or not we should build in the property tax increase that we're allowed each year by ordinance or whatever it is. So trying to figure out whether or not I should be building that in for the next two years for the biennial budget. So in order for you guys to give any feedback on that, you need to see some information on that. So that's what I'm bringing to you tonight. So property taxes in Newburgh are quite unique, as you all know. Our maximum assessed rate is $4.38 per 1,000. And our current property tax rate that we're assessing this year is $2.98 per 1,000. And this was due to the November 2017 special election where they, we split off with TVFNR. And so our rate went down. And then each year there's the decision to increase that rate by three percent each year to get back to that maximum assessed rate that Newburgh has. So exactly how much money are we talking about with this three percent every year? So using the numbers from the county, which I got all of this from Yamhill County's table 4A information. You take your total assessed value. So that was the very top number up there, that giant number. You increase that by three percent every year. So that was the assumption I used, which our tax base can increase more, but we just don't know. So using the three percent that you're guaranteed every year. So if we increase that, then you can see how much of the taxes we're going to get if we keep our rate the same, which those are the, the first couple of calculations on there. And then if we increase our three percent, that's allowable on the tax rate each year. Then you can see the difference on there, which amounts to a total of 724,000 roughly that we're talking about on the difference if we do increase the tax rate by three percent. And this would cost the average homeowner about $19 per year by increasing this three percent each year. But it is quite a lot of money for us by doing that. Does anybody have any questions on this before I move on?
Yes. Thank you for asking that. So if we did this two years in a row, what would we be at as far as how close to the total maximum allowed assessed value?
So that rate on there, it's
0.98. So just add six.
Yep. So that rate there, it just goes out a little bit, but it would be 3.1670. Can you see that where it's this tax rate if, if three percent allowed on that last rate there where it's 0.0031670?
Yeah.
So it would be $3.16.
Oh, okay.
Still. It's just shown a funny way when they do it on the county.
So just as a matter of information, there's, we are all aware that our assessments can go up three percent per year by state regulation.
Yes.
So that happens no matter what. The room that was created in our, our city budget or additional increases was created by getting rid of our volunteer fire department and changing the funding mechanism for the new, more expensive fire department. So the truth is that we as residents are paying more for our total services than we would have been if we would have stayed with our volunteer fire department. So as has was pointed out to me when I first became aware of this three percent. It was a little bit of a sleight of hand from the people that wrote the measure because they realized that if they kept it at three percent, we would all assume that it's the automatic three percent that the state has been allowing. So just for awareness, this additional three percent is something that very few cities in the, in the state have available to them. And it's a tool that our city has been using for quite some time and for some time in the foreseeable future. But because of, we are paying a higher tax rate than our neighbors.
Anybody else have any questions before I move on? Okay. So here is where the general fund sits as of December 31st. So I put the budgeted amount and then the actual that we've received as the December 31st, and then my projection of where we're going to land. And then whether that's over or under the projection. So things have kind of varied a little bit, so I'm going to just highlight a few things on here. Property taxes, we did have an increase of about nine percent this year. So we've seen some growth in the city, which is what's equating to about a $300,000 increase on our property taxes. Some of that is the regular three percent, then our three percent that we increased it on that. And then some of it was additional growth that we've had that's come on the tax roll that we've seen with other properties that we've annexed in. Yeah, yes, of course.
For clarity, I just want to highlight that that increase in assessed value was unusually large.
Yes.
So that, that's not something that you can extrapolate forward. And in fact, the county tax assessor himself was surprised at that particular number.
Yeah. So I wouldn't count on that in the future, but that was a nice, nice surprise for us. State shared revenues. I'm not projecting that to meet quite what we budgeted. It looks like the liquor taxes are not coming in as the state was hoping they were going to come in. And the marijuana tax is also coming in a little bit less than what they've also projected. So we'll see what that ends up coming out towards the end of the year. But yeah, moral of the story is people need to get out there and drink. The, the all time high was during COVID, which I think we can understand that. So we're starting to see it go back to its, its normal allocation. And then of course, the school district SRO contract, we received nothing for that this year, which is why that's a huge number on that. The planning subdivision fees, we've seen an unusually large amount of that coming in, which has also been nice revenue. But also that's probably not reliable source of revenue because that varies so much. The traffic fines are also coming in higher than we expected, just slightly, as well as traffic school, which just depends on the people who get citations and whether or not they're eligible. The photo red light also unfortunately has gotten us no revenue. And we are in the process right now of terminating the contract with Elevate. So that might be something we'll have to start over with.
Sorry, I had my light on my mic. Um, so you're pretty certain nothing's going to come in, in this fiscal year?
Yeah. Yeah, there won't, there won't be anything that comes in this year.
So on, on the red light is, have we lost money on that at all, Will?
No. Yeah, we haven't lost any money. Just time. I guess time is money, but. And then our interest, we've seen our, our interest rates have been very high recently, but it's starting to slightly come down as the Federal Reserve is lowering the interest rate. So we're seeing probably just a little bit less interest at the end of this year than what we originally were hoping. That sale of asset number was what we were projecting for the Butler property, which that's still sitting in limbo. So that we're not sure what's going to come of that. TLT is another one. So we had hopes because TLT every year had been coming in higher and higher and higher. And the last two quarters I've seen are really about the same as last year, which I think some of that had to do with some turnover at the Allison. So I think that might actually be bottoming out right now until the new hotel comes on the roll. So that one might be one that we will keep an eye on to see what comes in on that. And then grants and other just kind of miscellaneous that have come in. So really overall, things are looking pretty good. The things that we're seeing that negative number on there for the projections are really mostly the debt reduction items that we were hoping to come in. The SRO contract, the red light camera, and then the sale of the Butler property. And then just for, oh, yep.
You brought up the TLT taxes. I would like to remind council that we made a loan with the money that is going to be used to pay TLT taxes on the new motel. So therefore we will not see any revenue from the new motel until that loan has been paid off, which will probably be more than a year, probably two years.
Yeah, probably two years. And then for expenditures, um, the estimated ending fund balance is looking like it's going to be about 4.4 million, which is about what we were projecting on the model last year during the forecast. We knew things were going to come down a little bit on the fund balance just from being fully staffed this year. And then I have just projections on each department, which that can vary because people love to spend in June, which drives me crazy, but you know. It makes, it makes predicting things a lot harder when they see money and then they want to spend it, but yeah, we don't, we don't have to spend it, guys, but nobody listens to me. So yeah, so I think overall things are looking as we were projecting for the general fund. So, and I just wanted to briefly talk about our average revenue increases. A lot of them honestly really vary because they're dependent on a lot of different things. Property taxes can be between three and six percent. The franchise fees vary based on the franchiser's revenue that comes in, but that, based on that, it would be about five to seven percent. But by, based on what they bring in, the community development money really varies based on what we're building and what's coming in on that. State shared revenues have been kind of unpredictable between one and five percent. Same with the local marijuana tax. Our Dundee PD contract is five percent. And then we just have a lot of other ones that just kind of vary with traffic fines can just be dependent on what our officers are citing, same with traffic school. Opioids have been kind of interesting. We got a lot at the beginning of this fiscal year and then just didn't see anymore. So we're not sure if we're going to expect anymore this year or what's to come of that. And then interest is just kind of varying also with what the economy is doing. So then I wanted to talk about the debt reduction plan and where we're at with all of this. So these are the three revenue sources we lined out originally that were going to help us pay off that communication doubt, communication tower debt. So this year we had planned on the SRO contract bringing in 265,000. We planned on the red light cameras being up and running and bringing in around 250,000. And we planned on selling the Butler property to bring in 245,000. Last year, we had brought in from the SRO contract, the 265,000. And then we had just placed 15,000 in there just to start the sinking fund. So as you can see, really none of that money has come in. A lot of it is just hanging in limbo. So we're, right now, we're really only at 280,000 towards paying off that communication tower debt. But I think that we have a lot of things that are still in the works. So currently the principal amount that we owe on that communication tower debt is around 1.3 million, which obviously if we keep letting it drag out, we have interest that we're paying, which is about 97,000 in addition to that. But with where we're currently at with the sinking fund, plus what we think we're going to have on this, on an SRO contract that we have that's out there that hasn't been signed yet, but we're hoping that will be signed with the school district. We have interested people in the Butler property. So we're hoping that we can sell that. And then we're hoping we can get the red light cameras up and going next fiscal year. And I know Will has been looking at other pieces of property we could sell to easily hopefully make our next property sale. So this is still a very possible plan. If we wanted to continue with the debt reduction. It's just, right now, a lot of things just are sitting in limbo that I think are about to happen, but haven't happened yet.
And so I guess the, um, in one sense, the wages of innovation here have not panned out yet. So we, we a couple of years ago, tried to think about ways to bring in more revenue for the city. And to try and get rid of some interest off of the city's ledger, pay less interest by paying off the debts in there. Get a line item off the municipal billing statement. These are, these were our objectives. But through a variety of circumstances that we could not predict. Unfortunately, none of these dreams have come to reality. It's still doable if things line up. So we're not dead in the water. But I would say it's a bit more challenging now.
Yeah. But I mean, if the SRO contract comes through, that's that. The Butler property sales, we've got that. The cameras, I think could, now that we've seen the citation numbers, I think could easily make that dollar amount. But we have to start over with a new company. So that will take additional time. So it's still a very doable thing if council would like to continue.
So what's the payments that we make on that tower? Is it annual or do we make monthly payments?
Twice a year.
Twice a year.
Yeah. Twice a year.
Was that in this? Did I miss it?
No, I'm not quite sure. The payments change based on interest that's left and.
Well, we have 1.3.
Yes.
Basically.
That's of the principal only. We still have interest left, but if we were to pay it off, I think that's our payoff amount that we'd have to come up with. To pay it off early. And then that would be able to take off a municipal billing item statement from the water bill.
Since you brought that up, what is that amount per month?
It is $2.70, which would equate to about $32.40 a year for the It is $2.70, which would equate to about $32.40 a year for the average, um, single family home. So it's definitely more than the property tax savings.
Sorry if this is boring, guys, I know you've heard this before. And the difference is that when we get a line item off, unlike other cities, we're not adding more line items. We're not adding, ma- many cities have added extra fees and charges to the billing statement. I don't see that happening in Newburgh anytime, so it's, if we can get there and the road has got harder, it would be a positive thing, I would say.
Yeah, I mean, that's been a council goal, so that's, that's the goal that we've been driving for with this debt reduction plan.
So if there are no more questions for Katie, we do have a public comment.
Oh, I saw more on my presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. We just got stuck on this one. I wanted to talk about a few unavoidable costs that are coming up. Um, one of the big ones is the pension rate increases that we're facing, so a huge one is PERS unfortunately, this came in much higher, about double actually, than what we were forecasting and what the actuary was forecasting. The actuary always gives advisory rates, um, in between the years that they do the actuarial valuations. And our advisory wa- rates were about half of this, so um, and this seems to be the effect for almost all of the districts, their rates were much higher than what they were anticipating. Um, so this is going to be a pretty big impact for us next year, especially with our NERPs plan also having a decent hike. And then I just included this excerpt from, I think it was the Oregonian, who had a whole article on PERS about it's going to get worse before it gets better, basically with PERS. So that's kind of something we, we don't have any control over, so that's going to be a, a big cost to budget in next year. I also wanted to talk about our health insurance rate increases. So, um, especially considering, um, Providence is in network and they're still on strike. Um, that number doesn't look like it's gonna hang out closer to the 10 anymore. Um, but CIS has told us it's going to be more than what we had last year, and they were estimating between 10 and 15%, but they haven't released the official number yet. So we're, we're trying to budget in between to see where we're gonna be hit on those insurance rates. But again, those are unavoidable costs for us. And then just for perspective, um, the average employee cost increase is about 9%. Um, generally, it's about 7%, but with the huge PERS rates and the health insurance being higher than normal, it's a little bit higher than normal with this. And I also wanted to touch on a few upcoming budget items. So our future HR costs are going up extremely high next year in the budget. So that's why I wanted to get ahead of it and talk about it now. So, um, Allison, who's also here tonight, she'll probably want to chime in on some of this. Um, she is looking to step down from being our interim HR manager and cutting back on her hours. So that means we will have to hire an HR manager, and unfortunately, as you see the comps on here, that's a lot more than what we've been paying Allison. And Allison is working part-time right now, which also helps our cost. And, um, we're also looking at having to hire a second HR generalist just because we know Allison is a very effective person. And we're likely going to have to increase our FTE in HR just because of the staffing turnover. Um, we also have some recruitment costs that we're building in because we've had four failed HR recruitments in the past, so we're probably going to have to use a recruitment firm on that. So unfortunately, that's going to be a chunk of money. And with bargaining coming up in the second end of the biennium, we're gonna have to present a class and comp study for both, um, the police and for AFSMI. So we have, we've budgeted our anticipated costs for that as well. Allison, did you want to chime in on any of this? Not yet?
Not unless anyone has specific questions on the numbers, and then I can give you why I came up with some of these estimates.
I do have a question about the $219,000 figure.
So that one is fully loaded, so we put that oh, trying to remember the
13.
Yeah.
It's on grade 13, so, um, I, I mean, I'm sure you all know, but um, the way it works in the city is if you're hired into any kind of position, and then you do what we call in the city is working out of class, that means I was hired as a project specialist for HR, and I'm on grade 10. So when I work out of class, we have a standard across the city that the person doesn't move to the grade of the class that they're actually doing the work of. They get 5% of working out of class now. Please understand that it is me who has been advising everyone here that they shouldn't change that, okay? Even though they might like to have often said to me, Allison, you do the work, you should be on the grade, which I appreciate. It is a very bad precedent for the city, okay? So when someone works interim, you should only get the 5% above your grade. That means that the person coming in, according to the comps, would have to be several grades higher than I am in order for you to be able to hire somebody at a full-time basis, and then when you start adding, I don't take benefits. Um, and when you start adding the full package, you now get to a much bigger number that you're anticipating. And I wanted to give the city another full fiscal year of working here and plenty of warning for the budget, so that's why that's there.
Yeah, and I remember in a couple of our recruitments we've had, I believe we had people who were less interested in a working manager position, especially for the pay, which we had the pay, I believe, at a grade 12. So that's why we did some comps on here to see what other manager, HR manager positions in cities similar to our size.
It's also why I recommended to Will and Katie that you put the gen- the second HR generalist. Normally, for a city this size, you would have three staff, it's one per 50. And, um, Sydney and I are happy to go on for another year with just the two of us. We, there are some things we're not getting to, but mostly we hold it. Uh, the reason I wanted it in the second biennium is to give an incentive to a new manager who comes in and can then hire somebody, you know, ask for and receive somebody to increase their department and diffuse some of the activities. So I thought that would be an incentive for an incoming manager to be able to do that.
Yeah, I mean, in the past recruitments, we've had people say that they manage staffs of six or 10 or 17, and having only one, uh, staff was, was like they weren't interested. And so it makes it harder for recruitment on qualified people.
So, then can the, the, the moral of this story is, in a sense, not that we're asking for a lot of revenue in this area, but it's more like a return to normalcy. And we've been so, so well-served by Allison Seiler's incredible work effi- effort and her ethics and working for s- for so little.
Enough, thank you.
And we've tried recruiting in the past and it hasn't worked.
Yeah, so this is, it's a shockingly large number, but there, it's, yeah, a lot
And I have no complaints, I have loved every minute of this, and I, I am a true public servant. I never asked for more than I got, and I'm very grateful to Newburgh, and I'd have asked to stay on for 10 hours a week in the new year, I'd, in the new time, I'm hoping you'll find something useful for me to do at that level.
I'm just curious, um, when I'm looking at that, what, what's the, um, distinction that you're making, Will, to decide between a manager and a director?
So, because of trying to be very fiscally conservative, we, we insist that our many of our staff have a manager hat rather than the director hat, the director hat would assume a lot more staff. And it would assume that they wouldn't be what we call a working manager. So that would be where they still have to get hands-on and build recruitment packets and do filing and stuff like that. In a, in a larger organization, an HR director might have a staff of 15 or 20 people, and they wouldn't do those tasks.
Katie, on this next, on the bottom of that slide, it says monthly low and high, does it mean annual salaries?
Yes.
Okay.
That should be what that means, yeah. Yeah, that'd be a lot for monthly. Yeah. And then our next thing that I wanted to talk about was our police succession planning. So a lot of our NDPD officers have experience, and when we tallied it all up, the average officer has about 16 years of experience, which is quite a lot. And 20% have more than 25 years of experience. So we are extremely lucky to have such an experienced police staff. But unfortunately, with experience means eventually they'll leave and retire. And we're expecting a third of our police force to retire within the next five to six years. And with the way recruitment efforts go with police officers, it's a lot different than the average employee, so um, it takes approximately 18 to 24 months to get an entry-level officer up to speed and able to fill a role on the patrol schedule. So we're trying to start thinking about these retirements now because we can't obviously replace 10 officers at once with the way that recruitments go for that and with training. So we're trying to come up with a schedule on here where we can try and hire one and then another one, and then a couple more to get them up to speed so that we're not down a lot of officers all at once. So that's part of our, our planning that we're hoping to do also in this next biennium. Over the next two biennium, actually. Um, I just wanted to talk about some potential cuts if we don't do the property tax increase. Um, realistically speaking, I don't think the debt reduction plan will be feasible if we don't also have the property tax increase. It'll just be a lot to try and do that in case the general fund has to kick in anything to make the debt reduction plan whole. If it comes short on anything, I just think that will be difficult to do both. Um, we're looking at trying to potentially add a police, an entry-level police officer next year in the budget, which is part of that succession planning we talked about. Um, that will be difficult, we're looking at potentially adding a part-time code enforcement officer. Um, our current code enforcement officer is really bogged down right now with just lots and lots of complaints and code issues that he's dealing with, so we're looking at getting him some help. Yeah, it's, it's one person. And then, um, that second generalist that we looked at adding, um, may also not be possible. And then we're still evaluating that landscaping contract, which is a large dollar amount that we're trying to fit into the budget as well. And then I just wanted to put this in perspective because as budget season is starting, many, many, many cities and counties and school districts are realizing that they're in a budget crisis. And I feel very fortunate that we are not in that position. And I just want to caution that if we do too much at once, that, you know, things could go downhill. But we've been extremely conservative with our budgeting, and I feel very good with the way things have gone in the past, that we've been very conscious about our budget decisions that we've made. So, did you have something to add to that?
Um, so a key thing about this is, whereas other cities did the sugar high and used ARPA money to pay for their payroll, et cetera, we've had the same pressures they've had on PERS and health insurance. But we've managed to not, to grow the budget during the good years, to not have a boom and bust cycle. So we're not saying today, Katie's going to cover this in the next slide, we're not saying that if you don't want us to do the property tax increase, that we're going to cut below our current service level of staff. But we're at a tipping point where there are many things we're not going to be able to add, and that includes the debt reduction plan, frankly. Given all of these other costs that we've showed you. Unlike other finance officers, Katie hasn't showed you a theoretical structural deficit. She showed you actual dollar amounts of how much things have gone up. And that's why we're coming before you to ask what you want us to do.
So I think the, the main question is, do we want to continue with the debt reduction plan and move towards reducing that line item from municipal billing statement? Which I believe will require both years of the property tax increase. Or do we want to cancel the debt reduction plan and forego uh, one of the property tax increases, preferably the second year in the biennium? And so that is what I'm asking for input from council tonight, is which direction should I budget on this? It's a tough decision.
If we, let's, let's finish with questions for Katie, then let's hear from our audience member who's here to, to speak. Then we can deliberate on the issue, if that makes sense?
Yep.
So does anybody have more questions for Katie? Go ahead.
Yeah, Katie, I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. You said if we don't get an increase both years of that extra 3%, we can't do the debt reduction?
I think it's, I think it would be risky considering, considering the other costs with PERS and with our health insurance and with the extra things that we have to plan for, the police succession and with our HR costs going up, I just think it's a lot to juggle. But I think if we don't want to do the debt reduction plan, I think we can forego one year of the property tax increase. Which would be slide and tell you how much money that would be. Yeah, it would just, yeah, it would depend on the year, so yeah, it would be a chunk of money.
Let's hear from our, our member of the public. Robert, good to see you.
Good evening, my name's Robert Suppy, and I'd like to thank the council for finally addressing this issue. I think it's important to look at the big picture when weighing your decision about continuing to increase the property tax rate in Newburgh. Before the 2019, 20 fiscal year, property tax rate in Newburgh was $2.50 per thousand. If you do the proposed 3% increase for the next fiscal year, the rate will be just over $3, that's an overall increase of 20%. If this trend continues, as one would expect it to, if you don't stop it, the rate will eventually reach about $4.38, an increase of over 75% from that previous rate. The presentation refers to an average impact of the one-year increase as $19 each year for the average homeowner. This is in addition to an increase of over $100 a year that has already resulted from previous increases that you and other councils have imposed. When the tax rate limit is reached, the impact will be about $400 a year. The average home would have had a tax of about 530 before these increases and about 930 after, once the limit is reached. This increase will actually be greater as I'm assuming no change in the property value. Do you want to be remembered as one of the councils that participated in this large tax increase? Of course, these numbers relate only to homes, and you know, of course, that there are other types of properties. The absolute increases paid by the commercial and industrial properties will be, may be much, much greater. This council has worked hard to make it easier to sustain a business in Newburgh. These rate increases will be counter to those efforts. I think it's important to look very carefully at the numbers presented to you tonight. I don't question their accuracy, but I think there's context for some of them that is critical. For example, in the debt reduction tables, it shows $250,000 was originally projected as revenue from photo, or from red light cameras, though no revenue is expected for the current fiscal year. That is a one-time shortfall that you're trying to make up with a tax raise, tax increase that is likely to be permanent. Another show- shortfall is the 245,000 in sale of property. While it may be a shortfall in the current fiscal year, it's projected to be collected next year, actually it doubled that amount. Why is it appropriate to make up this delayed revenue by a permanent tax increase? The presentation notes an outstanding debt for the communication tower of about 1.4 million dollars. It is a one-time expense, exactly the sort of thing that should have been funded through a bond. Instead, the funding has come from ongoing tax increases. The tower has been funded by the, uh, the general fund. The tower has been funded by the, uh, the general fund on schedule without the, uh, sinking fund. Why is another increase needed for it? Presentation proposes increasing the number of police officers over the next four years to cover the expected retirement of senior officers. Does this council believe that this increase in officers will be reversed when those officers do retire as implied in the presentation? I find that unlikely. In looking at the expected revenues for the current fiscal year, I noticed that there are significant revenue sources that are expected to come in well over what was projected. For example, property taxes at three hundred thousand dollars, planning fees at a hundred and seventy-five thousand and traffic fines in school about a hundred thousand. How will you explain to your constituents why you couldn't balance the budget for the next year when you had these significant increases this year? I think it's important to note that past budget committees and councils were able to balance the budget every single year for about twenty years before the actions that allowed these tax rate increases. How is it they were able to do it and you are not? As you know, we've all been dealing with significant increases in costs over recent years due to inflation. Most of us has managed to get through this through a number of methods, often resulting in changing our habits and spending less. How will you explain to your constituents that while we individuals are figuring out how to get by in this economy, you can't figure out how to manage the city without increasing property taxes on all of us? Thank you for consideration of my comments. I hope that you'll move in the direction fiscal conservatism instead of towards taxing and spending. And with a few seconds left, I wanted to throw in one thing. I was very surprised in the presentation that it shows two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for an HR director for a single fiscal year. I noticed there was no comment on that. I don't understand why everybody else can get by for a hundred and forty thousand and we've got a budget item for two hundred and nineteen. I believe that's really for two years, even though it's shown as one. Anyway, thank you. I even finished ahead of time. Questions?
Yes, you make it for Robert?
Oh, I never.
Um, are you aware that the councils that you alluded to over the previous decades did not see anything like these increases either to COLA, to the, in medical insurance rates or to PERS? And therefore we have headwinds that they did had nothing, as you've seen from what other cities have had to do. We've dealt with these headwinds better. Secondly, when we have these officers, sorry. How would you propose to raise income to cover these expenses which these previous councils never had to deal with? What are your suggestions, positive suggestions?
First question first. I am aware of it and I've served on quite a number of those budget committees or councils. We did have significant increases in a lot of them that were pushed on us. I would have to go through it year by year and I certainly don't have that memorized. I would have to go through it year by year to see how it compared to these. I do remember some numbers that were of this sort that the budget committee and councils had to deal with. As far as the revenue sources, we've got two different things. You can raise revenue, you can cut expenses. I've not been on the budget committee for a long time, so I can't, I've not gone through your budget line by line. Pardon me?
Please do.
My time is better spent elsewhere. Um, but I will also say, uh, for example, I've been arguing for years that the tower shouldn't have been funded with property taxes, it should have been funded with a bond and I would have supported such a bond. And that wasn't done for some very poor reasons and it wasn't done years later for poor reasons. But that's an example of there are other ways to raise revenue. Now I realize that a bond is still paid by taxpayers, but it's got a big difference. When that thing is paid off, we don't pay for it anymore. By lumping it into the general fund and increasing property taxes every year with that as part of the justification, when that goes away, you're still going to be collecting those taxes.
So you've proposed no additional income sources that you can think of at this time?
I have not gone through the budget, I'm not on the budget committee, I'm not on the council and I, I do not have specific revenue sources at the moment to propose.
Sir, I would respectfully say to you, very respectfully, that for the staffing level that we currently have, for a growing city, soon to be at thirty thousand people, facing the increases that we have, knowing how lean on the bone we are. I think I've said enough.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just answer your question on the HR? That's not the salary, that's the fully loaded number. So if you were to take a salary, just as a fair example of a hundred and twenty, you add in, we're, we're projecting it might be a family health plan. That costs twenty-nine thousand dollars a year, so now you're a hundred and forty-nine, now you pick up six percent PERS. And you add that in and then you add all the taxes. It's a fully loaded number so that it's not just the wages.
So to be clear, the two nineteen you were showing there is the fully loaded?
It's the fully loaded number.
Down below or not?
No, they're not.
So how do you compare them?
Yeah, yeah, it's just about showing what the base salary would be, that, that's all, that's why it was a bit confusing.
Makes sense on the two nineteen, I just.
I, I just wanted to.
But when I see comparative numbers, they're based on the same thing.
No, it's just about, tho- those were to give the wages.
Thank you.
That explains it well, thank you.
Uh, one other, one other slight correction. The, uh, tower is being paid for by the, uh, water bill. And it's two dollars a month. Uh, I think that was the number we come up with and when that's paid off, it will go away as well.
Then I'll, I'll stick with. In the past, it was argued to be funded by the, uh, property tax increase.
Right, but. And, uh, of course, the other items that we have that we didn't have in the past is the urban renewal district, which takes about a half a million dollars away from our tax base this year and continues to grow every year after this. And that was my somewhat prediction. When, uh, as you might remember, I opposed the urban renewal district. And it was my assessment that the most likely outcome of creating urban renewal district, it was that we were going to have the need to raise our taxes by three percent a year, which again was ingenuous, but it's the truth. So. I've, who's next? Will.
I wanted to say for the record that the establishment strength number for the police department is a set number and has been ever since I've been the city manager. So staff that we add, we haven't added any police officers. If we add extra young police officers, there'll be a period when we have extra officers. But the number will drop back to our set establishment strength table, that's the agreement. The second thing is I pay for my eighty-year-old's property taxes as well as my own. If it's the will of council that we're not going to do this, we will go back and we'll work on the budget and we'll figure out how to cut some things. We will do that. But we can't let it sit on the record that we're plush with materials and staff or living in luxury or something. Because that's Sherwood down the road with a hundred and seventy FTEs, which we don't have for a smaller city.
You did a great job. Okay. This has been an ongoing conversation in my opinion for the last two years. This is not like the first conversation that we're having or not trying to find additional revenue or not trying to run as lean as we can. I think the city and the staff and the department heads and Will have been running lean for two years. And on the backs of COVID, when people were already burnt out, the city has grown, I, I agree. I don't want it to stand either that our staff are living in luxury, they are not. And I know how hard our staff are working, including you, Will. And, um, so I trust, um, the recommendation, I know you didn't put a recommendation, but I do recall that we all agreed that we would do a property tax increase, that we would just re-discuss it at this time, but that if we didn't find the ability to not, that we would be comfortable with it. Doesn't mean that any of us on this council want the property tax increase. But I do think that it, back to that slide, which is very telling of all of the news reports across the state, we are not in that situation. And I respect, I have a ton of respect for Mr. Suppy, but I do not agree. I do not think that we have been, um, negligent in our fiscal planning. I think this is the most robust fiscal planning that I have seen on six years in council and we are the most well-positioned in the region. So that's all you. And I want you to leave here feeling like you have done a job well done. Um, so my, even though I don't want to raise it, I want all of those things to continue, the debt reduction plan. I want to, I want to bring on another officer. I love retention planning, that is what we should be doing in my opinion. Um, I want our HR team to be robust, you know, these are the things we need to be ready for to grow mindfully and intentionally in the next ten years. So I want to be a council that is planful, makes the hard decisions, is fiscally conservative. We have acted fiscally conservative for the last two years of this council and I think that this council has worked really hard to do that. Um, and sometimes we have to make hard calls and I, so my position would be to do the property tax increase.
Well, um, I think I was the only councilor that voted against this last year. Um, because I wanted to hold the line. And I do believe that all of our staff and, and Will and, you know, chief, everybody has done their part. And as I know, um, you know, being, uh, uh, in business myself, you cannot always hold the line. And so as much as I don't like to see it, I know that it is a necessary thing. Um, and so I would support, um, doing the three percent this year. I think I would only do that because I trust the heads of the departments and the staff to do their job. Where I probably wouldn't have felt the same way in the past. But I do that now. And so you know, I think we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it because we are conservatives and we don't want to overextend the money that, that the, uh, people of this town have entrusted us with, it's their money. It's not our money, it's their money. And we have to, we have them, we have a responsibility to use it wisely. So that's, that's how I feel. My, my heart is feeling funny because I just think I heard Mike say that he's in favor of raising the taxes by three percent. Who else would like to weigh in on this?
I'll just keep it real short. I mean, I think these are hard decisions to make in the long run. Um, I just, I agree with Mike and Elise, I think it was well said.
I was debating between approving it for one year or two. But if we can get that um, communication fee off of the bill, that's going to be a long-term help to our citizens. The part that just gives me heartburn is knowing how strapped everybody is today. Buying eggs, for example, right? Um, and then this just adds to it. I guess not until November, but anyway, I, I think I could support two, one for sure, maybe two.
I think I'm gonna vote with the rest of the council for the increase.
I swear before God Almighty that if we get the revenue side to pick up, if some of these revenue items that we started, not the one-time deals like selling property to do debt reduction, but if the SRO thing can be solidified, if we can see robust revenue from those other new programs, we don't want to do the property tax increase. It, and, and I promise you that we'll be looking to not do that if the income picks up. So we have to build the budget from where we stand. But looking to the second biennium, if things have stabilized on these new income sources and if we have another good property tax year and we see our base grow a little bit, and especially if another piece of industry moves into town, which would be a game changer, we don't want to do it. And, and that's my commitment to you. I'm going to keep trying to not have to ask for this because I thought we weren't going to have to ask for this, this cycle. But things just didn't pencil out the way they should have. Thank you.
And procedurally, I just wanted to explain again with the biennial budget shift. I wanted to get a feel for council because I'm building two years of the budget. But you'll see a property tax motion one year and then a next year. So that second year, while it'll be in the budget already, if that's what we, the consensus is, which I'm sort of gathering that's the consensus. Like Will said, if the cameras explode or our property tax base really increases again, we can reevaluate that. Yeah, exactly, before we actually increase it, that's, that second year in the budget. So if I build it in, I can still, we can still reevaluate that. I just wanted to get a consensus if it was a one way or another with how council was feeling on this issue.
So having not weighed in yet, um, one of the things that I ran on when I ran for mayor was getting rid of some of the debt that is on the utility services bill. So I guess I had planned to to work to get that off until I met Will and his plan for debt reduction in, in our city. And he convinced me that he was going to be able to reduce the debt, which does in effect bring, take one of those off in a very short period of time. So I guess my question I have, Will, is is there a possibility that we can remove that one point four million dollar item in this biennium? If we allow you to have, if, not you, if we go ahead and authorize the tax increases?
I think that it's still possible. It's just going to be harder. Cause we're starting over from scratch with one of our programs. And the city also has to sell another one of its smaller pieces of land that we have. And so those are some lifts that, that have to accomplish. I still think it's doable and it's been a shared dream of both of us to get the city to a condition of much lower debt and maybe it will enable the person who comes after me to get the city to debtlessness, which would be the ideal position. So yes, Mr. Mayor, I think it's doable. But it's just, it's going to be hard. We have to start again immediately.
So I think you've been given sufficient direction here today. We don't need to go any further on this. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Very informative. Who gets to give us the capital improvement plan? Presentation. In other words, follow that, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. The first thing I wanted to say about the CIP plan that you're going to see is it actually covers a span of four years, not just two years. So we've looked ahead and done a lot more thinking than perhaps you've seen in previous capital improvement programs. The second thing that we've done, and make no mistake, this is going to have a very positive effect on the rates discussion next time, is we've taken away any projects that we don't think are critical and also taken away any ones that we don't think are achievable. In other words, we're not throwing extra spaghetti on the wall to see what sticks, which negatively impacts the rate model. A rate specialist is going to be rebuilding the rates model from scratch based upon this work that you're going to see tonight. So our requests for rates increases on the rates model are going to be lower than what you've seen in the past because of the way we're doing things. And perhaps just as importantly, I think this is stuff that we can actually achieve under this new structure. And perhaps just as importantly, I think this is stuff that we can actually achieve under this new structure. With the help of Keller Engineering. Next slide, please. Thank you. First of all, the objectives of the process were to come up with the high priority items and focus on those. To update anticipated costs for those items. Some of our dollar amounts from earlier periods had to be indexed up a little bit because things have, have obviously got more expensive. And evaluate projects in terms of the anticipated fund reserves and available system development charge money. And gain CIP review board consensus around the approval of the projects in the biennium planning period. So it's a further look ahead than you've seen in the past. Next slide, please. We're going to go through these projects based upon how they are paid for, and that has been our approach. The, the first one is multi-funded, meaning it is paid for from all of the different rates. New slide, please. We're proposing to allocate three hundred and forty two thousand dollars per biennium. To improvements that will happen at the public works maintenance yard. So these might be uh, works that are conducted with building improvements. They might be work that is connected to uh, creating enclosures for vehicles. Or other things that we do not yet know. A key thing about this dollar amount is that when Preston presents me with what he spend, wants to spend it on every year. If it doesn't hold water from my perception, and if it doesn't have backup, the money will not be spent. So in other words, these are dollars that we're budgeting for, but we may not necessarily spend them depending upon what his plans are. And we'll be looking at any suggestions from the maintenance division with a critical eye. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And you see it's quite STC eligible if it's improving the capacity of the yard. It does have an STC amount. New slide, please. The next classification is going to be wastewater funded projects. This is an ongoing thing that we have always done, except we're actually going to start doing it. Starting from this next six months. So we're going to be spending money on limiting the amount of infiltration. That comes into our system from rainwater that will reduce the flows that go to the water plant. And therefore will stave off the need to build oxidation ditch number four. Cause we're working on number three in the near future. So to give you a highlight of the sorts of things that we will be doing, I'm going to pivot to Brian. Who has a couple of ideas about things for the next six months. And these will be similar to the sorts of projects we're gonna be doing every year in I N I.
The next six months, I'm ready to put out to bid for what they call a top hat over in the northeast side of town. We have a lot of groundwater. Top hat goes in and seals the lateral connection. It's where we're getting a lot of leaks. We're estimated right now about five hundred gallons a minute coming out of that one trunk line. Out of a hundred, about a hundred homes, hundred and fourteen. So that, that's what I'm gonna need to be working on. I have out for quotes now. One uh, trunk line by the hospital. It's got a hole about the size of a softball. It's like a two inch hose gusher. So hopefully, I mean, those are ones I'm gonna work on immediately. Maintenance and I are working together to come up with a plan on some of their hotspots, meeting with Craig. To do some pump station analysis, get some flow monitoring in, so we can determine and nail down some more sources. And that's groundwater that we don't have to treat at the treatment plant. It's the wear and tear on our infrastructure. So all that I N I is, is saves. Thank you.
Do you wanna ask, can we answer questions as we go here?
Sure.
Okay. There's no way to quantify, uh, I mean, you know, the more you spend. Law of diminishing returns, eventually we're not, we're not getting the bang for our buck. Is there any way that you can? Quantify how much money or how much less infiltration we're getting by doing these projects?
Absolutely. First, I did one about five, close to five years ago. It was a trunk line from the hospital that went through the golf course. All we did was seal up the leaking manholes. I'd have to go back and look. That was enough. I and I saved in there and that was just based off. Pump rates at the Fernwood Pump Station. It was enough to pretty much cover all the single family homes in Crestview Cross. And I spent less than twenty thousand dollars.
One thing to point out about this project, like all of our projects now, is these were designed by having everybody at the table in the room. Blue and white collar workers to design the plan. It wasn't, it wasn't a product purely of engineering. Although we had good engineering support. So that's a different approach than we've ever used before. And once again, though, like all of these line items, if Craig, if Brian can't convince me. About what I and I projects will do for a certain run, then we're not going to spend the revenue. Which means that there'll be more money left over for some of our big projects that you're gonna be seeing in a minute. Next slide, please. So in the first of the two biennia. We would like to do a thorough engineering leak detect type study of the entire city. Looking for where to target I N I money for the follow on years. So this would be Keller led, but it would involve teams of staff putting flow monitoring equipment. In all of the pipes to track where we think we're getting heavier than we should flows and try to build a map of that. And I'm gonna pivot to Travis for more technicalities there.
Good evening, Mayor, councillors. It's good to see you all again. It was about six months ago that we had the opportunity to join the city. So it's been, it's been very good. So happy to be here this evening. Um, yeah, as far as the I N I report, it's gonna give a bit more backbone to what, um, Brian. Mentioned there. So basically it's gonna take the two thousand and fifteen report that we put together, which is ten years old. Account for the different projects that have already been done and reevaluate the entire system. So. It's basically putting flow monitors in during the wet season, seeing how that compares to the flow monitors being in in the dry season. And then also doing what they call CCTV inspections of the pipes where you can see obvious leaking locations. Um, we've picked off a lot of the low hanging fruit for the I N I, so it takes a bit more investigation. To actually get in and identify where the remaining um, sources of uh, groundwater and uh, inflow are coming into pipes in the system. Um, so that's, that's the gist of it. Are there any questions, I guess?
I would say that this will provide a bit of a roadmap towards what we do as a follow on activity as we continue.
Okay, maybe, yeah, just pointing to the mayor's um, earlier comment too. What we would come up with out of that is a prioritized, um, basically best bang for your buck project list. Um, so these are the highest sources of infiltration and inflow. This is where you can do it for the least amount of dollars where you can maximize those projects. So that would, that would be the goal of that, that report.
Thank you. Next slide, please. It's been off and on all night. There we go. Okay, this is one of the big ones. There's two really big ones that we're going to present to you this evening. Um, this is the oxidation ditch expansion project. Now, as many of you know from looking at the rates model in the past or at looking at the system development charges table for those who worked on that. We had thought that the oxidation ditch, the next oxidation ditch would probably be seven or eight years out. That's kind of when we planned to do this. However. We've received, despite our previous I N I efforts, we've received a letter from DEQ saying. That they think that for winter flows, we are now at or even potentially beyond capacity. What that would mean is that the next time we have to build a lift station because of one of these lovely new housing developments. The next letter from DEQ is not going to say, we think that you're at or about. Uh, winter flow maximum. It will say you have now exceeded your winter flow maximum and you must stop doing construction. Which would be a problem, especially if that next piece of construction was a factory at the mill site. For example. So here's the good news. I think. And by the way, I currently have a study underway to find out what the, uh, an accurate price would be. But I think that this is one that we're actually going to be able to purchase with cash reserves on hand. Because we've been saving for this eventuality over many years. So you can see the breakdown. This is a project which is fairly massive and it would occur over two biennia. It would be funded partly from cash reserves in hand and it would be funded partly from system development charges. Now, the current system development charge eligibility is unrealistically low at twenty two point one percent. But the rates, the SDC rates expert who's on the state review board. Feels that because we're adding so much extra infrastructure, the SDC eligibility would easily be well north of fifty percent. Perhaps as high as seventy percent, because it's not just a new ditch for the effluent. It also includes upsizing a bunch of the back equipment. Therefore, we think we have enough cash in hand to get this thing done if we knock it out. And that means that more than likely, I will be a very aged man, if alive at all. Before we have to build the next oxidation ditch. And I think we all know what an oxidation ditch is, right? Although it's also the back system. So. New slide, please. Okay, this next one is in order to facilitate our ongoing repairs of pipes. And in order to power the road resurfacing program, we have added a line item to each of the rates that are relevant. To account for the need to replace pipe that we need to do ahead of road resurfacing. And also just to start to do more pipe replacement in older parts of town especially. So you're gonna see this appear in several places. This is a holding fund for below grade pipe replacement. To occur in the first two biennia. And so for example, here, this would get us three hundred thousand dollars of wastewater pipe replacements. In each of the biennia. And we think that that's gonna be sufficient money for us to keep ahead. Of what we want to do for road resurfacing. If they can stay one year ahead of the road resurfacing work, then this is gonna work really well. And that's the plan that I've hammered out with Preston. They're gonna pick. Two hundred thousand square feet of each type of road resurfacing. And we're gonna figure out which pipes have to be done under those using these funds before we do that. New slide, please. And on to water projects. New slide, please. And here is the poison pill from our friends in Salem. So this is the dollar amount. This is already started and it will be an ongoing part of our budget for many years. To upsize these pipes. And perhaps one day, the vertical growth will come in these areas. And perhaps it won't. But as you know, some decisions were made before any of us got here to launch this program. And so the upside of this is that we will end up with newer, better ductile pipes. In these areas, but it's a lot of money. Anyway. New slide, please. Okay, annual pipe replacement, same thing, water, not wastewater. New slide, please. Okay, here's one of the favorites that we're gonna try and fix this time. There is an undersized line that runs down this section. It is a four inch line that needs to be an eight inch line to prevent the flooding problems that we've had in this area. It has continuously leaked and broken using money every year as we replace small sections of pipe. Often fifty thousand here, a hundred thousand dollars there. It also is very technically tricky because it has to go under the railway line in one section. Which will require special railway approved sleeving to go around the pipe that is under the railway. Because apparently, that's a thing. So. I'm gonna lean in if you'd like to add any remarks.
The railroad makes you, when you go to put something underneath there, you have to be underneath the ballast, which could be six to eight feet of. Ballast rock supporting the tracks. And they make you put inside of a protective sleeve. So basically you're putting in two pipes to get one. It's a carrier pipe. And deep. You know, our typical water lines, three feet to cover. Until you get there, you dig down to figure out where the ballast is and how the depth of it is, you don't know. So it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a challenge. Not to mention, you know, you're dealing with ODOT and the railroad at the same place.
So one suggestion that I made when we started talking about the improvements to Blaine Street. Was should we abandon that railroad line? It's not likely to ever be used. Back there for the industrial side before. Are we looking into that? Have we, uh, are, I mean, are we looking into?
Yeah. That spur right there is the one down on Blaine, I believe is owned by the mill. They obviously didn't have jurisdiction because that's in our ODOT rail, but I believe they owned it. This one is the one that goes up to Sherwood to Portland. Main Street, yes. Even though they don't really use it much, they go back down and around towards Albany and around, they say it's faster.
And I think the other, the other thing, just to put the annoying railway thing to one side is. We just also spend a lot of money here fixing this pipe and it's undersized anyway. So it's, it causes localized flooding when it ruptures. And it's, it's a waste of our money to keep fixing it. And you're gonna see there's a couple of projects like this where I've said to the guys. I want to know what our practical problems are, not, not a castle in the sky. New slide, please. So the next ones are stormwater projects. Have you already noticed how much less projects there are? Compared to previous CIP lists. Okay, here's one of our old favorites. I call this the. What do you call this? Yeah, yeah, right. Um, this causes a lot of problems at this intersection. It is an undersized and damaged pipe under the building. It doesn't make the property owner very happy. We flood him about every second year. We flood the two adjacent houses nearby. We flood them about every third year. So we also have water that because of this flooding is eroding the side of the railway bank. And floating debris down along the side of the railway line. In other words, I've been hearing about this problem since I got here, and I mean at the library. I don't mean in City Hall. So our goal here is, and we're already working on this one, is to make a new line that's not crushed. That will run through the gravel street while it's still a gravel street, get it around that building. Look at upsizing it slightly and stop this flooding once and for all. Right?
So this, this floods Jerome Manufacturing? They actually have flooding there or is it the houses around it that do?
Well, the, the waters have impacted both businesses and houses. So it's just, it's just one of these things where we want it, we wanna move this water on.
It's actually Ultra Quiet Floors that owns that, that business now. But the pipe, for whatever reason, runs underneath that building, which should have never happened. Right? So someplace in the past, some engineers didn't do their job and, and created this issue that we're not gonna take.
So the property owner has his stock up all the time on special pallets so that it doesn't get ruined like it has in the past.
What's the timeframe then? This sounds like something that needs to be done like right away. What timeframe are we looking at?
So we, we just contracted, Brian's actually going to be the city's PM for this, but another gentleman in our office who did the preliminary study last year, he's managing it. We're currently under contract. The intent is to get this constructed this year. So hopefully before the next rainy season, well, once we get past this one, before the next rainy season, then we, we would actually have this constructed. So that's, that's the goal for this one.
So when you say this year, you mean this summer?
Yes, sir.
This is another one of these ones which have been coming to council for many years and we have just not had traction with our old engineering structure. So we're moving forward. New slide please. Same deal, stormwater fund, some money. We find stormwater that needs pipes that need to be replaced ahead of doing tough work or other areas that are just wrecked or whatever's happening, we can replace it with this revenue. Similar idea to the other ones. And if we don't use it, it stays in the fund. New slide please. Okay, so this one is a thirty, I wish Russ was here, but you know, but I'm doing the best I can. There's a thirty inch line feeding an eight inch line. Thirty inch going down to an eight inch, right? So what's happening is this causes water to form like a swimming pool all along the road when the stormwater system backs up and it's backs up because you're trying to pour a big jug of water into a straw. And so it becomes a hydroplaning driving safety risk. It's causing some erosion. It's just dangerous. It needs to be upsized to get that water moving properly. And it's another one that's just, for some reason, languished on the tables of engineering for many years. And it's a practical thing that we just need to get done in these four years. And we're going to try and get it done within these four years because it's quite a section. Want to add any remarks? I know I've played.
It's shocking because of the pipe sizes thirty to eight, but that was an old county road that was given to the city. And that was part of the reason the pipes didn't size together. So it's fixing some of that old infrastructure that the city inherited, I guess, from the county.
I'm having trouble following the map. Is, is that all on Springbrook?
Right there next to the Station Twenty One.
Okay, and then thirty one hundred feet, so that must be.
It starts above that and then goes down south.
All the way to ninety nine here.
So at one point, they thought it was a good idea to tie that thirty to the eight to a catch basin with no other pipe. So it fills up in bubbles and you can raft across Springbrook on the rapids.
Plus, this is the one where you remember that that an older lady has her garage flood all the time, which I know you've got a lot of email about, so that's not the only reason why we're doing it, but it's another good reason to fix it. Before we have a wreck. Next slide please. Okay, so on this one, periodically, we want to do a master plan update to assess the entire system. And it's the same sort of thing as doing any other master plan like the I and I one. This is to help us spot other things that we need to fix or should fix. It's something we're supposed to do every five years according to our code, which is about the right time. By doing it in this biennium, we will be smarter. We will learn more about what we need to fix in the future. And with this partnership, we will get the things fixed that come up on the list. I'm going to pivot to Travis because I am not an engineer and I don't play one on TV.
I think probably the last two projects illustrate the need for this project. So, I mean, proper planning helps us to identify where the, where the most significant issues are with, within the city. So we're going to take the industrial knowledge of every, all the public works crews, the engineering department, put that together, come up with a plan update. And similar to the I and I report, come up with a prioritized list of the most important projects for the city. So that'll, that'll be the goal. We just began the process of this. We're basically in the data acquisition phase. So the, this current fiscal year, we've got the initial stage of the plan update. So then the, within the biennium, we'll be doing the, the remaining work with that.
Here's an interesting thing that happens when you hire Keller Engineering. If they tell you that something's going to cost on an initial look see at a hundred thousand, turns out later, it turns out to be ninety four thousand five hundred or such. In other words, there is an honesty and credibility that comes with this company, which means when I see a number, they think that's the right number and have a growing sense of trust that the number will be that or less, and it so far has always been less. New slide please. Transportation projects. New slide please. Okay, so I'm going to talk about this because it's a bit near and dear to my heart. But for engineering context, I'm going to pivot to Travis again on this one. You ever looked in a tool bag and you only find that there's one hammer, one chisel and one screwdriver? And and you're like, why does this not have the right tools to make the, the job go better? Well, in this case, if we want to use that analogy, the transportation system plan is like a bag with hardly any tools in it. There are so many different ways to do cross sections that are more affordable. There are ways to assess our system differently that is just lacking in our very poor transportation system plan that we have right now. Not only would I like to see a full review of the transportation system, but more importantly, from my point of view, is I'd like to have go to standards that contained more clever, imaginative and cost-saving cross sections for future road construction, not just for the few roads that the city will build, but to give private industry more official choices to choose from that could potentially be more affordable. I'll just name one pet peeve of mine. The standard cookie cutter cross sections that we have for some of our larger collector streets have the sidewalks on both sides. And if there was a cross section that had the sidewalks amalgamated into a multimodal path, still legal within state standards, it could mean less width and therefore less right of way acquisition, less trees removed and a more affordable street could be built. Now, that's not a cross section that can be used everywhere. But the tool bag is empty. The tool, the tool bag has what? Is three or four cross sections in it, which are all approved alternatives. I would like to see something with more options that everybody could use when they build in our city, not just our streets. Also, it is time to redo the TSP. And with assistance from Mr. Segal, who as you've seen, has the ability to deliver complicated planning matters in an approachable and understandable way, I am certain that the language that will be created in this plan, which will have his input, will be a lot clearer for the developers, which is one of his goals. Pivoting to you, my friend.
Not sure I could add much to that. That was well said. I, I would just say that the TSP updates tend to be very interactive. It'll take a lot of input from staff and coordination with the public. So that's something that, there'd be a lot of engagement on that because at a minimum, as Will mentioned, you know, we need to meet the standards, but there can be a lot of flexibility as far as how, how that needs to be tailored to any given city and what best suits. So I, I see this one as a highly interactive, engaged process.
So that process will include a lot of public outreach. It will include, include remeasuring our systems. It will include the drafting and creation of new cross sections, which are legally allowed in Oregon. But boy, they're going to be very different from the cross sections that we have in the toolkit today. New slide please. Okay, we're almost done, folks. That's about half of, yep, that's about half of the number of projects that you used to see. But we were going to try and get all these done within four years. So River Street, so we're looking at that and we're looking at it in concert with the urban redevelopment district. The numbers that you see there are, is, is what Nura could afford to currently service a payment on if the city took out a bond to do half of the revenue. And the other half of the revenue would come from system development charges, which is what we collected that for. This was the first thing on the Nura hit list. The Nura Citizens Advisory Committee approved sticking with the original plan. Will it cost that much money? There's no way to know until we start to do the investigation and the design. I personally think with, with a better cross section, it probably will not cost that much money. We want to investigate all possible ideas for cost containment. Some of the ideas are, and we've not scoped these yet, could the street become a one-way only street with an alternative return method? Which the mayor suggested and we're going to look at that idea closely. Another idea that we've thought about is to avoid a repeat of Elliot Road, do it in two projects, each of half of the total linear distance. And of course, starting south of Fourth, we're, because we're not going to redo the bit that's in good condition because that's a waste of money, right? We also have some advantages on this street that Elliot did not have. There's a cement underlayment under most of the travel distance, which means that we would be scraping off all of the asphalt on top and relayering on top of what's there with some grinding work. In other words, we don't have to in many parts of this journey redo the whole underlayment for the street. We can use the existing base for a lot of it. I believe Russ, who was the man who was here when this was built the old time, said that it was about two thirds of the street distance had that under it, which makes it cheaper. My thought, early days, scope all of these things and work on going north to south, probably in two sections. That's the thinking, cost containment, right? And we want to get into this as quickly as possible in the first biennium. Although we think it will take both biennia to get this fully completed because the railway, railroad crossing is complicated in the southern section. That's where all the complexity is. New slide please. Oh, I didn't add an end cap on. Shame on me. So that is, that is all of our CIP projects for the next four years. That's less than was used to be brought to council. Beyond four years, we're extrapolating the sorts of expenses here, which are less than what the CIP model would have in it in previous years. And we think that will make the rates discussion be a lot more palatable for our residents when we do rates again, because the next rates review will be based upon these real world projects that we think we can achieve and not on pie in the sky stuff. But I'm not an engineer. So if there's any other questions, I, I might pivot to Brian or I might pivot to Travis if they're of a technical nature. Thank you kindly.
So the last item on our agenda is the Board Commission and Committee Updates. I don't have a list of what, I, I need to make sure I have this list from now on. Any of you have a committee? I know you do, that you worked with this week. You want to update us?
It's the Traffic Safety Commission. They're going to come in, I think, the next meeting and give a little presentation and ask of council about what they'd like to see, or what we would like to see from them moving forward.
I could talk about taste, just reading. They are doing a social media campaign that will run spring to fall twenty twenty five. They're going to do some video productions, just more advertising. Oh, I could also talk about the ad hoc, the, what do we call it? The wine? Yeah, the wine industry ad hoc, ad hoc committee. Oh, shoot, I had that written down. And that, we're still working on our goals for what the committee wants to accomplish. One of them is, one of the suggestions was position Newburgh as a premier gateway to wine country. So kind of rename Newburgh as, just to promote tourism, that sort of thing. So.
All right. Thank you, Robin. I think that's it, folks. This meeting's adjourned.